$209 million. This is 7.5% higher than FY '16 amended and 8.6% higher than FY '16 estimates. The primary cause is a timing issue that I indicated last week that I would attempt to explain. This is a change in the one-time true-up and the end of the sales tax triple flip. Last year at this time, the state laid out a scenario for the wind-up of the triple flip, with the city beginning to receive its full allocation of sales tax this past January and then receive a residual true-up of about $2.3 million in FY 2017. The state has since changed that schedule, with the full allocation starting in April of this year, and the final true-up will be considerably larger, as you can see on the general fund overview, of about $10.2 million, consisting of the 1/4% from January to April. This is a timing issue only. This revenue was not received in this fiscal year; instead, it will be received next year. I should point out this is not extra revenue, and it has been used to balance this year's budget. The increase in the remaining revenues, particularly in property taxes, business license, and franchise tax. Total resources are $313.7 million. This includes the estimated carryover from the current year, which is estimated at $4.2 million. There are several factors involved in this carryover, number, primary of which, the additional property, business license, and room tax are offsetting the delay in the final triple flip payment. Higher-than-budgeted charges for services, primarily in development and code, are also anticipated for '16. And lower-than-budgeted personnel costs. Attrition is fund-wide but primarily in police and DARM, also lower operation and maintenance costs. Increases in revenues over the five-year projection vary from 1% to 2.5% with a few exceptions to known one-time events. These are conservative estimates. There are several unknowns with regards to revenue. As always, the strength of the economy and the recovery, and the effect on assessed values, since property tax is such an important revenue for us. The effects of the drought and anything that that may kick in, and also the effect of internet sales to sales tax revenues. The three largest categories are property tax, sales tax, and charges for services. Together, they represent 77% of general fund revenues, and that is shown on the graph on Page A70. Very briefly going over some of the larger general fund revenues. Property taxes are estimated at $116 million, including the RDA increment. This is a total of 37% of total general fund revenues. This reflects a growth rate of 2.9% over the 16 estimate, excuse me. The number reflects an estimate of the impact of the upward reassessment of properties within the city. Per the assessor's office, that is the single largest factor for next year. The out-year estimates are 2.5% for '19 and 2.3% thereafter. Sales tax estimates are $83.4 million or 28% of total general fund revenues. There are just a couple of extra notes that I'd like to point out with this revenue. The largest categories are general retail, transportation, and food products, and these have been steady for the last few years. The latest information we have from UniServices, our consultant, indicates that for the fourth quarter for FY 2015, new and used auto sales had the largest growth. Service stations in light industry had the largest declines. Currently, there are two components of sales tax: the monthly sales tax and the triple flip. This will end next year. Charges for current services, this is the revenue category that the city has the most control over. Now, it is the third-largest revenue in the general fund, a total of 10% of total revenues. About 50% of these revenues come from the Department of Development. The rest come from Public Works, parks, PD, and fire. They are made up of permit fees, inspection fees, plan check and review fees, vehicle release, and our share of the vehicle code fines, code enforcement and parking revenues, and gate and league fees from parks. Estimate for 2017 is currently $31.9 million. This is higher than FY '16 by 1%. DARM and code revenues are up, but PD revenues will be going down due to the redeployment that is in process, and that will impact impound revenues. Business license tax is also up, about 1.5% next year. Room taxes up 2.5% for next year. It is also on track to meet FY '16 estimates. Franchise taxes, which are made up of multiple components, including the Comcast, AT&amp;T, and PG&E franchises, total $13.2 million. This is an increase of 1.2%. Appropriations, looking at those on Page A76, total appropriations are $293.2 million, which is 6.9% above FY '16 estimates and 5.1% above '16 amended. The majority of this increase is in employee services. The category percentage changes over the five-year projection vary according to known circumstances and anticipated changes. For employee services, FY '17 is up $18 million over FY '16 estimates and $19.2 million from FY '16 amended. This is primarily caused by the 27th pay period costs, which total $5.8 million general fund-wide. MOU increases that have also been worked into the employee services. Full-year costs for the positions that have been added partially this year. It also funds 801 sworn staffing in Police Department, 334 in Fire, and includes positions for code enforcement, Public Works, City Attorney's Office, and Parks. In the five-year forecast, the increases in this category vary according to MOUs and other known factors. Also included are the full-year costs for all of the positions that are potentially to be added this year. A note to the council, this category is not just salaries, but also includes leave payoffs, overtime, premium pays, workers' compensation, and other personnel costs. Health and welfare costs are up $2.1 million from FY '16 estimates. There will be no increase or no increases budgeted in the premium for FY '17. However, the costs are going up because of the additional positions that we are proposed to add. This category is much more complex now because we do have MOUs that have different payment structures than we had previously. The growth factor over the five-year is 4%. The retirement contribution reflects the final step-in of the impact and the decrease of the rate of return from 8% to 7.5%. I believe there is an additional decrease that has been approved by the board, and that will impact FY '18 through '21. It's also taking into account the increases in staffing over the five-year. The growth factor is 3% per year in the five-year. Operations and maintenance is down $6.2 million. That's primarily caused by the reduction in one-time items that were added in FY '16. There is a 1% increase factored in in the out-years. Support costs for the additional police and fire positions has also been included. Interdepartmental charges are down slightly from FY '16. This is primarily because we did not have to replenish the $3 million SIR as we have done in prior years. The fuel savings have also been substantial, not surprisingly, and we have a 1% increase factored into the out-years. Finally, moving on to transfers, just a few quick notes. All debt service has been covered and will be paid next year. It is all budgeted. The detail for citywide debt service can be found starting on Page A15 in your budget books. The total debt service for the general fund in FY '16 is $35.5 million. Total city obligations is $1.2 billion. 54% of that is backed by enterprises. The transfers that you see on that page do not include the POB or lease payments. Those are paid through departmental charges, as always. The GAAP settlement will be paid off in FY '18. There is $804,000 budgeted for that next year. No transfer to the general fund reserve is budgeted for FY '17. Speaking of the general fund reserve, on Page A80, the balance currently is $11.8 million as of today. It includes the RDA loan repayment of $2.7 million, which was received in January. The proposed growth over the next five years is funded solely by the repayment of the RDA loan, since there is no general fund transfer scheduled in the out-years to support the reserve. That concludes my general fund overview. If the council does not have any questions, we can move on to the first department, which is the Department of Transportation.
I do have some members that would like to address this, starting with Councilmember Baines.
Yeah, I need to do a quick motion, Council President, and then I have a question for Jane. I need to carry over $100,000 currently in general city purpose for the industrial compatibility study and place the funding in DARM as the RFP process and contract execution will not be completed before June 30th of this year. So that's my motion. Thank you.
All righty.
And so, Councilmember Soria second me.
Okay. So I have a motion by member Baines, second by member Soria.
And Ben, really quick, just for the general fund, Jane, or whoever's capturing this this year, what I'm really interested in is all the funded vacancies we have, and if we can provide a list of what those positions are and a timeline of when, how long we're gonna, when we plan to fill them.
We'll do. We'll get that for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple of questions for you, Jane. So one, just for the, if you could explain also so the public can know that throughout the budget, we mentioned the 27th pay period, and so how that impacts the numbers. Can you explain that so that a layperson can understand how, you know, what does that mean for us and?
Sure. The 27th pay period happens to organizations that pay their employees on a bimonthly basis because, and as it's explained, and I'll refer back, if you will allow me to, to the general fund overview on Page, it's here, it really is, bingo, on Page A78. Only 364-day years, not 365-day years, are divisible by four, or seven by 14, and so every so often, that accumulated extra day adds up to an additional pay period. And so the last one we had, I believe, was in FY '7, FY '8? The next one will be in FY '28. So it's just a matter of when those accumulated days, and of course, leap years also contribute to that as well. And so when those days accumulate, then we have to pay those individuals one more pay period a year. And so what we do is, in the city, we have established a 27th pay period reserve that we contribute to each year that hopefully will help offset some of that cost, and we have $1.6 million that will be transferred back into the general fund next year to help offset that cost. Then we will start, after a couple of years, we will start building that reserve again against the next pay period, which happens in 2028.
And if I could add, this is one of those things, I think it was around 2010, that caught us somewhat by surprise. And so in order to mitigate it from happening again, we have built this reserve in order to fund that future liability, because at that time we had to basically come up with it out of the general fund pretty much all at one time.
Thank you. The other question that I had, it's related to the general fund debt service, and so just if you can explain to us, how do we determine what percentage or what amount we pay off for the next, you know?
Well, those are established by the bond covenants. When the bonds are actually issued, there is a repayment schedule that is established so that the bondholders know when they're going to get paid off and in what amounts. And finance maintains those schedules, and they are the ones that process the payments, I believe, twice a year. One is purely an interest payment, the other is an interest and a principal payment, and those are determined before the bonds or before the loans are even issued.
So those are consistent with our original agreements?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Screen is clear. We'll go to the next subject.
Okay. The first department that's up to bat will be transportation. And just a few notes on the tables that you will see within the B section that you'll see, and transportation does start on Page B137. There are several tables that are placed within the B sections that hopefully will help you to understand the financial condition of this division. We have department revenues and expenditures, all funds combined. That is the first table that you will find, and it basically shows the overall department picture. It combines operations, capital, and debt service, and it is in effect a snapshot of the entire department and gives you a total budget regardless of where the revenue comes from or where the expense is going to be spent. The second table you will see is the department appropriations by fund classification. This basically breaks out the department's funding by fund type, and that is indicated by either general fund, special revenues, capital, enterprise, et cetera. And so you can see the composition of each department and how they are funded. The last financial graph is down there on the bottom, the department appropriations by fund type, and this basically splits it out between operating capital and debt service so that you can tell how those departments are split up. The last table, basically, in each department, is going to be one that shows the department positions over time by full-time equivalent, giving you a snapshot as far as what their staffing levels are like, what they were, and what they are proposed to be. So, and each department is arranged in exactly the same way. So, moving on to transportation. As I indicated, transportation starts on Page B137. It is an enterprise and internal service department. Its total budget is $160.4 million next year. Total positions are 492.25 FTE, or 508 total positions. The major changes for this department, they will be implementing new and expanded services this year, including expanded service later into the night, increased frequencies on weekends, and additional corridors with the Fax-15 service, including Shaw, Cedar, Blackstone, and Ventura Kings Canyon avenues. The Fax divisions have also started to build an asset maintenance reserve, a grant match reserve, and a bus and equipment reserve. These reserves will provide the department with the resources needed to maintain and repair existing assets and leverage local, state, and federal grant funds for the acquisition of new and replacement equipment, vehicles, and facilities. They have also budgeted $500,000 for the establishment of a public safety fleet shop, which I believe was mentioned earlier. The revenues for the transportation department are generated through a variety of sources. Transportation is primarily funded through state allocations, federal grants, Measure C, and passenger fares. Fleet management is an internal service division whose revenues are made up of charges for services provided to clients within the city. Total resources for transportation are budgeted at $193.6 million, or approximately $8 million less than this year's budget. The causes are a variety of factors, obviously, decreases to additional Measure C allocations, reductions in charges for services due to declining in passenger fares, monthly transit passes, and special rider passes. The department is expecting that the additional and expanded services will help offset some of the current loss of revenue in future years, but it will take a certain amount of time. Increases in anticipated fleet revenues of $2.3 million are due to replacement and new equipment acquisitions for equipment for various departments. These increases are offset by decreases to revenue in fleet maintenance due to the elimination of service work for the Fresno County Rural Transit Agency and reduced fuel prices. Expenditures are decreasing $7.8 million when compared to FY '16 amended. This is the decreases primarily in transit, enterprise, and capital operations, with a small decrease in the internal service functions of fleet management and acquisitions. This is the result of a combination of increases and decreases, additional $5 million for personnel costs, additional $172,000 for operating appropriations, and a decrease of $7.41 to interdepartmental charges. The personnel costs of $5 million are mainly reflective of an additional $4 million for staffing necessary for operational improvements, service increases such as increasing the 15-minute intervals, reductions to capital appropriations of $12.5 million, or $12.1 million are mainly due to award and acquisition for the 34 bus and fixed route for bus rapid transit. Public Safety Shop is intended to address the fleet needs of both the fire and police departments. The program includes seven half-year positions and half-year lease for a maintenance facility and some for parts and materials. 62 total positions will be added in '17, including 37 bus drivers, which will be staffing the increased service levels. The remaining additions are listed on Pages B143 and 144. I will not go over those. Again, you can review them at your leisure, and I'm sure the department is prepared to answer any questions that you may have. This concludes my presentation for the Fax department. If you do have any additional question, I believe the department is here, and we'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you very much. We'll open this up for a public comment. If there's anyone in the audience from the community that would like to address this issue, please come forward and give us your name and address, and you'll have a few minutes to discuss this matter with the council. Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public portion of that, and we'll go to the screen, and the screen is clear. So Jane, I don't want you to get too comfortable.
No, I didn't.
So I guess we'll move on to Development and Resources Management, AKA DARM.
Okay, so we will move on to DARM. Pardon? B35, that is where Development and Resource Management starts. B, B as in boy.
Hold on, hold on just a moment.
The director, Lee, the transportation director?
He just walked out. Did you need him?
Yes.
Go, fly.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Here's my fault. I thought we were, I thought we had some questions too at the dinner slide. Apparently, everything's great in Fax. It's really good to hear, Rick. I'm gonna infer that from your silence. Hey, really quick, and I didn't have many questions, Brian, but I did want to ask about the update for the on-time performance for Handy Ride. You know, and as you've been aware through several emails with concern constituent I have, I want to know kind of how that's going, what your thoughts are on that issue.
Yeah. The, it's funny, there's a dip, and before the, we changed over a couple of things. Some fare boxes for Handy Ride, as well as some of the communication, are overall operating program, and when that operating program came in for Handy Ride and for us, it caused, quite frankly, a massive dip, a dip in service that we're just repairing. They operated under one operating system. We operated under another, and now those two software systems are the same. But we are focused on getting everything back up there. The dip is the learning curve in them understanding the system. That's the bottom line. So we're working with them to make sure that they get back up to where they need to be. They know from us the service level is not acceptable, so we're working on that.
And when's that contract back out for RFP, the bit?
I think it's available very soon. Don't have an exact date, but as I recall, it's pretty soon.
Okay, and then I'll make that one of my requests, if I can have somebody find out, send that back to me, when our Handy Ride, what's the, it's the name of the service?
The name of the company?
Name of the company, I mean?
Keolis.
Keolis. When Keolis' contract is back for RFP, I'd like to know where that is, and then definitely kind of a more thorough update on their on-time performance and some of the fixes that they have. Thanks, Brian.
And just also for the record, they get penalized for when they're not at our standard, they're financially penalized.
Right, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Baines. Member Soria?
Brian, can you stay up here? Thank you. I actually have a follow-up question as it relates to what Councilmember Baines brought up in terms of Handy Ride. I know that you're saying that they get penalized. How are those, how do we determine whether they get penalized or not?
It's based on the percentage of non-compliance, if you will. So if, and I believe our numbers, like 90% on-time performance, anything less than that, then they're financially penalized.
And how do we track compliance? What's your measure?
There are a few things. One of them is they have to record every trip. That's the first part. And when they record those trips, then we're able to see the times they actually pick up. We do spot checks. We may call out to a person, ask, "How was your trip?" So essentially, that's the system. And again, everything is recorded. One thing that's great about the conversion to this universal system is we can just tap in and see without, before they operate at their own system. So we couldn't see as well, but now we can.
And then just, I wanted to just bring up a comment that I was informed about in terms of complaint forms for not just Fax, but I think even for Handy Ride, accessibility. If you go onto our website, I think it's very hard for people to find them. And so I think if we're talking about access and we're talking about Handy Ride, right, we're talking about sometimes people with access issues. And so I want to make sure that complaint forms, one, are available in multiple languages if they're already not, and, two, that they're actually accessible to the public and easy to input, either if we're provided at the, you know, within the Handy Ride bus, or even somewhere on our website, because I think folks have had trouble finding them on our website. It's kind of hidden. So if we can make sure that those are accessible, I think it helps us improve our customer service. And also, in terms of compliance, I know that you guys have your certain measure, but if people aren't satisfied with the service, I think that we should be taking that into account as well. And so if we don't have, if we don't give them access to these complaint forms, we won't know if folks are satisfied or not.
Absolutely. And we changed the language on that. At one point, it was focused on being a complaint- At one point, it was focused on being a complaint form, and now it's a customer feedback form, because we want to know the good and the not good. So, but yes, we will make sure it's in multiple languages and definitely more available.
Perfect. And then just the last thing that I wanted to bring up, I know over the last probably six months, we've been, or more than six months, we've been in conversations about access to the universally accessible park, which we know right now doesn't have access to public transit, and where it's located, it's challenging to get there, especially for individuals on wheelchairs, or if they have some type of, you know, some challenge with some ability to move and get there. I know that we talked about a deviated route, so I just wanted to make sure that we talk about that on the record. Within your budget here as being proposed, is that taken into account so that, I want to make sure that we're, that there's assurance to the community that has brought that to our attention, that there would be better access to this universally accessible park?
Yeah. That's a, that's an interesting piece. We've been tracking that, and what we realize is that, given an option of Handy Ride, which would be door-to-door service versus general bus service, from November until May, there have been three Handy Rides passengers who have traveled to the park. So...
So, are you now going to say that there is no need for a deviated ride because Handy Ride has only been utilized three times?
What we're recognizing is the, just the facts of the need, and right now, it shows that the, by public transportation, the need appears to be pretty small.
Okay. I think it's a similar argument that we've had when we were talking about bike lanes, right? We'd say that, oh, well, there are no bike users in certain streets. Well, it is my belief that sometimes you don't have users because the access isn't there and the space isn't there, so I think this is very similar. I know that I've heard it from RICV, which is our nonprofit that has partnered up to adopt the park and is the one managing the park, and so I know that them, and there's a couple other advocates for the community with disabilities that have really been pushing me, and I know that they've made phone calls to make sure that we do create access. So, I really, really want to make sure that within this budget, that we're addressing that. That's a priority for me. I want to make sure that folks west of the 99 and folks that have, you know, disabilities within our community that want to have access and utilize the park, that have the ability to, and not just rely on Handy Ride, but actually if we can make the deviated route, because we have done it in other instances. So, I'd like to really, before we vote on, before I vote on this budget, I want to make sure that I get some assurances that that issue's going to be addressed.
Yeah. The deviated fixed. Yes. To answer that question, yes, it's a...
So, Councilmember, as part of this year's budget, we're also proposing to do a, and you're part of the Transit Committee, this is a critical, or an issue that we're going to have to grapple with, and that's the coverage versus high-productive or high-demand corridors. And yes, we've done deviated routes, or we've done test routes in the past, and the indications have been, and all you State Center Community College, we ran service for about eight months up to the new State Center Community College District at Willow and International, and got very little, no ridership, even though people claimed there was. So, perhaps what we need to do is deal with, rather than trying to deal with this in isolation, we need to deal with this from a holistic standpoint, in which we look at the restructuring of Facts, and potentially maybe there may be a need to change Route 9 permanently, which I think is the route that we're talking about, the Shaw Avenue Route. But in dealing with it in just isolation, once you start dealing with correcting something over here, it potentially has an impact over there, and I really would like the community to be engaged in this conversation, so that when we come back and make some decisions about the trade-offs or the benefits, that we do that in the totality of the system rather than just one part of the system, because we've done that in the past, and it really isn't as an effective way to address system-wide issues.
Okay. And so, do we have a timeframe then that we can deal with that? Because I know that I've been getting, you know, calls and concerns for, over the last six months, and I think probably even more.
I believe the Transit Committee, I believe, is scheduled to have one more meeting, and I thought, based on comments made last week by Councilmember Baines, that we were going to present this overall restructuring to the council, and then we would start engaging the community to have their feedback as far as some of the proposed changes, and this would certainly be one of those things that would be accomplished over the course of this budget.
And so how does that match up with our budget that we're going to be approving by the end of the month? And how, you know, how will it, would there be any changes in terms of how we're funding?
If we were, let's say hypothetically, be able to get back with the proposed restructuring within, by November, December, then there'd be whatever we could afford to do within the existing appropriations over the revenues that Facts has. That's when we'd be able to make those, and it wouldn't just be this change, it might be some other changes that would be used to provide savings that might be able to use to fund this other kind of service.
Okay. So before the end of the year, we'd try to figure out some resolution? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The screen is clear. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I think we're ready to go to DARM, and after DARM will be the City Attorney's Office.
Okay. Development and Resource Management starts on Page B-35. This is a general fund and special revenue-funded department. Its total budget is $51,895,300 for next year. Total positions, 195.8 FTE, or 198 full positions. Major changes in 2017 are two new neighborhood revitalization teams with six new positions. This will bring it up to a total of four teams. Continued funding for the STOP program. Implementation of the land management system. There is also funding for specific plans. The CDBG budget of 6.6 million is on Page B-41. The federal entitlement funding detail, which is a detail of all of the federal entitlements that we get, CDBG Home, ESG, and Hopwa, is on Page A-18 through 27. This budget reflects the annual action plan presented to the council last month. The changes to the AAP approved by the council will be brought back through a substantial amendment later after the public review process has been completed. DARM's revenues for FY 2017 are budgeted at 46.4 million, an increase of 3.3 million. The revenue increase can be accounted for in the general fund as well as the federal entitlement programs. The general fund revenues are increasing by 2.4 million dollars compared to FY '16 amended budget. Building and safety services, planning code enforcement, and parking are all estimating increased revenues. The department's grant and entitlement revenues are increasing by $919,000 as compared to the FY '16 amended. These revenues may reflect sizable year-over-year variances as they are based on availability from the grantor, generally the federal government, and unspent appropriations that may be reprogrammed and rebudgeted. Expenditures, DARM's total FY '17 appropriations will increase by $488,000, or 1.1%, as compared to the FY '16 amended budget. The FY '16 appropriations are increasing primarily driven by the land management system and the additional positions for code. DARM personnel budget totals 19.5 million, which is 1.2 million in increase from '16 budget. Ten new positions are proposed to each in building and safety and planning divisions to address processing times, and six for the two new code teams. That concludes my presentation, and I believe that the Director is here to answer any additional questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much. Is there any member of the public that wishes to come forward and address this issue or item? Please come forward now and give us your name and address, and you'll have approximately two to three minutes. Good morning, Ms. Barnes.
Good morning, Council President. Dee Barnes, FCA President, 1330 L Street. I just want to say we're glad that they are increasing some positions in this department. One of the things that I've continually spoken to councilmembers when we meet is the fact that the labor groups and the employees want to work with the administration. We want to be a part of the solution. We want a seat at the table. I'm glad they're adding positions. It's been very frustrating, because this is a department that has had a lot of problems, and part of that is because decisions are made without input, without a partnership. In 2010, I think it was, they took five of the positions that are used in the city to do the code enforcement and check the buildings and homes, and they reduced those to two positions without any real training plan, and you can see some of the bad results we've had over the years with the code enforcement. So I'm just asking that council and the administration will find ways to work with the employees and the labor groups to solve the problems, because we want to partner. We want the City of Fresno, we want the citizens to get the best services they have. So, just to ask that you'd consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public or from our community wish to address this issue? Now is your opportunity. Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, and we'll go to the dice here, and Councilmember Quintero, your opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Manager Dell here, or somebody from Code?
We have the Director here.
Okay. I'm particularly interested in the code enforcement part of this. How many new code enforcement people are being projected in this year's budget?
There are six new positions being proposed in this budget. They are two senior community revitalization specialists and four community revitalization technicians, all six of which would be operating in our neighborhoods and have the ability to write citations.
Okay. The ones I'm interested in is, okay, with those, if that's approved, how many code enforcement people does that bring us up to?
So, our total of positions for code enforcement would be 48 authorized to write citations. There would be seven administrative in-the-office positions, as well as four additional positions through the City Attorney's Office that will be supporting our specific code enforcement efforts. So, a total of 48 in the field.
Okay. The, I guess the concern that I have is that the, when we turn in a request to do some code enforcement in a neighborhood or that type of thing, I know that, you know, and Dell's done a good job in just trying to do the best he can with a box of Band-Aids, because that's basically the way it's been because of the economy and that type of thing. But what I'm concerned about, and I'm seeing it more and more, is deterioration in our older neighborhoods, where now we're seeing all the work that we did some years ago, it's kind of fallen by the wayside, because we're seeing more and more people park their cars on their, on the front lawns, we're seeing trash in the front yards, and a lot of those are rentals, they're rentals. And so we turn in a request for code enforcement, and it takes a while to get it done, or even checked into, and then when we look it up, we can't find it. So, and it's just, we're getting more and more of that from calls from the older neighborhoods. Before, I know we were able to do sections of, you know, go into a neighborhood and say, "Okay, let's do this, this whole neighborhood." And it seemed to have fallen by the wayside when this, the whole thing started up with the Lowell-Jefferson neighborhood. Let's make this neighborhood great again, and I've been walking that neighborhood, and it just seems that the other neighborhoods in, like in District, in the district I represent, all the work that we did to try and get those cleaned up, improve them, now we're back to where we are, and it takes a long time to get it, get it taken care of, and we're getting more and more calls from people that, you know, have lived there 30, 40 years and say, "The house is a rental, it's not getting taken care of." And so, you know, the proposal, you know, what I've seen in some of the past budgets, "Okay, we're going to hire some new people, we're going to do this strike team," but they just concentrate on one area. And I know it's difficult. We'll call Dell, and he says, "I'll try and get somebody out there." How is this going to change?
Absolutely. So, over the past several years, as you know, we have gradually started with, there was a trial in Lowell, and we've continued to work with the neighborhood in Lowell, and it has expanded to five neighborhoods, and those include Eldorado, Lowell, Yocome, Kirk, and now Jefferson. We've just started in the Jefferson neighborhood a few months ago.
Gee, none of those are in District 5. Funny thing.
I understand that. So, over the next year, we anticipate adding another, an additional 10 neighborhoods to conduct proactive code enforcement, and that will include exactly what you're talking about, that door-to-door evaluation of each property, determining what is necessary to ensure that that neighborhood continues to stabilize. So not just doing the proactive code enforcement, but providing those additional solutions to provide self-sustaining neighborhoods, that when we move on to the next neighborhood, there's not the demand to come back over and over again.
They're going to come back, Jennifer, because when you move on to the next neighborhood, that neighborhood is going to go ahead and probably deteriorate again because of some of the rentals that you have. And as much as we've, as we've talked about and publicizing, gee, we're going to do all this for the neighborhoods and all that, we're still ignoring some of them, and I know it's because of the lack of bodies, but when you concentrate on one neighborhood and you're ignoring three or four others, that doesn't make sense to me. You know, we've tried it, and it seems like we're doing more of the same. I mean, we've got, I've got neighborhoods in southeast that, you know, we worked hard, we got those cleaned up, and now it's just difficult, because everybody's concentrating over here. And I just, you know, that's, it's frustrating to call a resident and say, "Gee, I'm sorry, they're concentrating on another part of the city."
So, I hear your concern. So 15 of the 48 will be concentrated in specific neighborhoods, 15 neighborhoods throughout the city. There are an additional 33 positions that are citywide positions. They may have focus like the tire team, like our blighted and demolition team. However, we do have the remainder of those 33 positions are citywide, and will be focused on addressing those complaints and trying to focus on resolution of the complaint. So we've spent a lot of time over the last number of years really focusing on issuing citations, but with the assistance of the City Manager's Office, the City Attorney's Office, among others, we've been really focusing on how do we get compliance? So it's not just about writing tickets. We've been really good at writing tickets, but that has resulted in what you've seen is that it takes a long time before you see action. So we're driving towards how do you accomplish the action? So citation might be a way to move some individuals into compliance, but that may not be the only way to move individuals into compliance. So we want to keep pushing toward more rapid intervention, proactive code enforcement, traditional code enforcement, but the ability to move from citation into action much more quickly. So that is the focus of ensuring that we're improving our processes. We meet weekly with the City Manager to understand how those processes work so that we can make that change.
Well, I'm just real disappointed that, you know, it's, I mean, I didn't hear anything about District 5. And then the other part is, everything that you explained sounds pretty good, but when is it going to happen for us in District 5? I mean, I... I mean, I've got, I've got neighborhoods that, that the renters that don't care about taking care of the property are in bad shape. And before, we would be able to get somebody. And now it's gotten to the point in some of those areas where we've had to call the police to go in. You know, it's bypassing code because we've got to call the police. And, and that's not right for people that have lived there 30, 40 years, have an investment. And so that's, you know, I keep hearing a nice story each year, we're improving and, and, you know, it's still, it's still hasn't, hasn't changed all that much that, that I've seen. And I know that, you know, in, in the past few years, all we've been able to do is, is hand the depart, the code enforcement a box of Band-Aids and say, good luck and, and do what you can do. But the thing is, is when it's concentrated in one area, it's not helping the rest of the older neighborhoods in, in the city. And, and so we're starting to, you know, feel, well, well, we're getting overrun now and, and we're getting the calls. And, and you can only, you can only promise them so much or when something's going to happen and it doesn't. See? And that's the frustration with the, with residents. They're, they're tired of saying, gee, we, we didn't have parked cars on our, on the, on lawns before. You know, we didn't, we didn't have cars up on, on jacks on the street with cobwebs growing underneath them and, you know, just the, the yard is, is trashy. Or you're seeing a lot of illegal activity, you know? And the police have been, have been pretty good in responding to that. But when you've got that going on out there and it's back to where it was back in, in the 90s, it's, you know, we're kind of falling back. That's, that's the frustration and those are the calls that we get. And it's, it's just, it's just hard. So I, I just, I'm just not happy that you're concentrating this neighborhood, this neighborhood, and ignoring this other one.
Absolutely. So we agree that there need to be more tools for the code enforcement officers. Over the last several months, you have adopted a number of ordinances or amended a number of ordinances that will assist us. So it's a more effective and efficient use of those resources, again, to move to compliance more quickly. So you've established very good policy. We're moving into proactive code enforcement, effective use of our resources to address those, those issues and those problems. And we're always looking for ways to improve that efficiency. But it's, it's not just throwing more people at the problem, it's finding the correct solution. If we keep writing tickets and we don't see the results in the compliance, that doesn't get us to, to your solution and your resolution more quickly. So we want to use the tools that we have and new tools that we're trying to evaluate and trying to put into practice to make sure that we're addressing those neighborhoods.
Well, I don't really agree with you 100% when you say that it's not a solution throwing more people at a problem because a lot of times people do make a difference going out there and actually showing a face rather than getting a letter in the mail and, and trying to work with them toward compliance. I, I think it's, it's a one-on-one that, that is, is more effective. I know the costs are, are going to be higher and that type of thing. But if you've got people out there that, that are actually seeing the problem firsthand, trying to work with, with the person that's out of compliance or getting ahold of that property owner that, that lives in Los Angeles or, or another part of the city of Fresno that just collects rent, I think then, then you start getting their attention. And, and also citing them because they're seeing it firsthand. So it's just, I mean, that's what I'd like, I'd like to see more of. We used to have code teams of threes that would go out into neighborhoods. We'd identify an entire, like a block of a neighborhood and say, please go in there and clean it up. And that's when, when I saw our results coming through. And I think we even had less people back in, in those days, but it was, it was, it was bringing folks into compliance and finding them. I remember former city manager Scott, he says, well, we got to take them by the hand and, and kind of show them how it's done. And I said, well, no, that guy's just picking up the rent. You know, we need a, we need a hammer with citations that, that's going to make them come into compliance. Otherwise, they're just going to ignore us. So, I mean, you remember those days. But, you know, I mean, they're not being nice to the rest of the neighborhood, why should we be nice to them? If they don't want to come into compliance as well as the, the folks that are actually renting it because it hurts the rest of the neighborhood. So I'm, I'm kind of disappointed a little bit. Hold on.
And if I could, Councilmember, I, I think what Jennifer is trying to convey is that we're looking at these 10 additional neighborhoods, but rather than just dealing with code, there are issues impacting this neighborhood that go far beyond just code enforcement. And it's a more holistic approach. For example, we have, Fresno Unified has some concerns about some of these surrounding neighborhoods and the impacts that they're seeing at, at the school or in the schools. So the student, the neighborhood resource officers who have typically been planted on the campus will also be in the neighborhood. And they will be working with this team as well as others to effectively deal with the root issue, or root issues. But that starts with an assessment. But rather than it just being a code or writing citations, that doesn't necessarily get you compliance if, if there are some underlying issues that are curating that environment which is impacting these neighborhoods. So what I think Jennifer is trying to convey is that rather than just dealing with it with one department, we are taking more of a cross-departmental, citywide, and in some cases, multi-agency approach to dealing with this. And, and it is the first step, I believe, with the use of these student resource officers to move towards a community policing strategy rather than, just like code, if all we keep doing is going out to someplace and, and writing citations, but we don't get a wholesale change in whatever is causing that problem in the neighborhood from a public safety standpoint, then nothing really changes other than our officers are tied up doing the same thing over and over and over again. This is a more proactive approach than reactive and we'll be coming back with those neighborhoods. But we're seeking some additional input from Fresno Unified because they are a major investor in this. But it's, again, a more holistic approach than we have taken in, in the past.
Yeah, but you keep writing up these, like you mentioned, over and over again, it's the same people, so why are we still being nice to the same people that we're writing up on the other side of town?
That goes back then to the, the, the compliance component, which is what Jennifer pointed out. One of the things I found when I started digging into code enforcement and one of the challenges, and it's just as frustrating for the employees as it is for the neighborhood, is that while we write citations all day long, it's getting people to comply. There isn't enough in, in the ordinances right now to, and then a hearing, when we get to hearings, officers or hearings, and we don't have all the information, it's getting those folks at the end of the day to actually comply with our code. Other than just paying the citation, then they come back and do, do it over again. We have to come back and take a different approach. I can tell you abandoned vehicles, and if you have work orders or requests that come in through Fresno, which they should have, and they're not being corrected, that's, I, I need to sit down with Brendan and go over that because on my dashboard, I, I can tell you that abandoned vehicles is way up there, not just in your district, but throughout. So here's, here's what the assistant directors are working on. Is it, is the abandoned vehicle in the driveway or is it the abandoned vehicle in the street?
Or on the lawn.
Or on the lawn. So what, what we need to come back and, and correct is there shouldn't be any differen, differing, differentiating between an abandoned vehicle. It's either in the street, but you know as well as anybody that some people like to play musical chairs. They move it to the lawn, back to the street, and it's like whack-a-mole. And so the assistant directors right now, because it is at the top of, one of the top items under Fresno, is working on how to address that issue in order to reduce those numbers. But I can look at, work orders have been opened, citations have been issued and closed, but you've still got the same problem.
Well, and getting back to my initial point is, you know, we're going to, you know, asking to hire these folks and this is how it's going to get done. But just concentrating on a couple neighborhoods is the frustration when we've got them, we've got quite a few in District Five, you know, that, that, that we'd like to get done. And we don't turn them in purposely because we know it's not going to get done now. I mean, you don't, you don't have that feeling of confidence before that, that, that it will come into compliance and, and, and somebody to get out there, you know, in a timely manner. And I appreciate the, the work that Dell has done, I really do. But when you're, you know, you're telling me, well, we're going to just concentrate on these three, three or five neighborhoods and need some more people, you know, that's, that's where I, I get concerned about, the rest of the, of, of the city.
So I'm going to assume, but of the, the future 10, one of them should, we would like to, you would like one of those future 10 in your, in your-
No, I'd like 10.
You'd like 10? Okay.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thank you, Member Quintero. Member Soria?
Thank you. I have a couple questions. So one, first I'll make a comment because I was looking at the, at the budget in terms, not the line item, but the regular budget book. And so I know that earlier, was it last month, we made, you guys brought CDBG?
Right.
And so that hasn't been corrected? Are you guys going to give us a new page that reflects the changes that the council made? I know the P-Bid was still on here.
Right.
Or some of the stuff. So I just want to make sure that that is correctly reflected.
Yes. So the city council-
On the CDBG funds.
-adopted the federal appropriations budget, the annual action plan on May 12th, which was not in enough time to make the corrections to the budget book at that time. There are several line items that were removed and unprogrammed. And so that is how it will be reflected in the final approved budget by the city council. However, those unapproved, those unprogrammed dollars will have to start over with the federal appropriations process. So we will have to go back through our 45-day process and that'll be after the final adopted budget by the city council.
Okay. And so can you give us those items that were changed so that folks know?
Sure. So the, there were three main items. Two were removed. The Fulton Corridor facade grant project for $100,000 was unprogrammed under public facilities and improvements. And then there was an additional allocation of $163,000 for the hub, which is in this to be determined, this community facilities nonprofit to be determined, the 500,000. That is where the allocation for the Fresno hub had originally been located and was removed. So there will be $263,000 that will be reprogrammed at a later date.
And then I have a question on that same page. It says nonprofits to be determined, $65,000. What is that? Can you explain?
You allocated at the time, again, so the city council had not allocated the, or programmed those dollars. So that is the dollars that are to go to Fresno Boys and Girls Club for the Fink White Center, the EOC for their transitional living center, and to the Section Three Training Program. So those are the three, three projects that you programmed on May 12th.
What I would encourage you guys to do, because it seems very unclear and the public wouldn't know, since those monies have already been programmed, I think for full transparency, I would include a note that would say, these are the nonprofits that are including, that are going to be given those funds because we already approved them. So I would suggest for future in terms of budget for full transparency, that folks know who we're allocating these funds to, the community. Then I also know that there was $1.2 million for neighborhood street improvements. This was a comment that I made last year. We receive CDBG dollars because we have a large percentage of low, low-income and moderate-income folks. I want to make sure that we're utilizing these funds to augment the, the services and the infrastructure improvements in those neighborhoods or in those districts that do have the greatest need. I know that we want to sometimes divide upon equally seven, but I think that we need to have a very important, just frank discussion about the needs that exist in some of these neighborhoods, south, you know, in the south part of the city that could benefit from the augmentation. And I strongly believe that, that is the reason that we receive these types of funds because there is greater needs in some neighborhoods. So I want to make sure, and I don't know how you guys can do a presentation to us so that we can see how these funds are being allocated, the 1.2 and then additional. I know that Public Works will have additional funds that are allocated to districts.
In the annual action plan that you approved on May 12th, the four specific areas to be allocated for those street resurfacing projects were identified in that particular budget.
So I understand that that's, that, and these projects are specifically in areas that are low-income, so I get that. I'm just saying for the record, because I know that Public Works will also have a, a piece in the budget, that we make sure that we don't just say, okay, everyone gets the same amount. There's some neighborhoods that a little, need a little bit more help, which is why these funds were given to us. So I'm just saying, I hope that it's a reflection of us augmenting the, the resources that we do receive as a result of being, having low-income communities. That's, that's just what I'm saying. So I'll have this discussion, I guess, with, when Public Works comes up. But I just want to make sure that it is put on the record since we do allocate some CDBG funds for those same purposes.
If I could, Councilmember, when Public Works does come up, we, we have the proposed funding based on CDBG, gas tax, Measure C. There are a number of different colors of funding used to support local street maintenance work, and we'll have that for you when Public Works comes up.
Perfect. Thank you. And then I, I do want to also just echo some of the same concerns that were raised by my council colleague Quintero regarding code enforcement. And maybe if you can answer this. So I know that there's different teams and additional teams that will be selecting 10, 10 new neighborhoods. So how many code enforcement officers are available for the rest of the city, for those neighborhoods that are not being selected?
So as I stated previously, there are 48 total code officers that are authorized to write citations, 15 of which will be directly allocated to the specific proactive code enforcement areas with the emphasis on remediating blight in, in those specific neighborhoods. Additionally, the 33 are citywide. Some are specifically paid by the state to remove tires. So we have our tire enforcement program, which includes cameras. We've been very effective in catching illegal dumping, especially of tires in our, in our alleys and identifying those who are, are dumping those tires and removing those from our alleys. We have additional teams dedicated specifically to demolition of unsafe and dangerous buildings. And then we have specific, our STOP team, which is two code enforcement officers, which is the strike team on problem properties, which is our cross-departmental and cross-agency partnership with the housing authority, with the Fresno Unified School District, with our police department, our fire department, our city attorney's office, where we're looking holistically at where are our challenges in terms of specific apartment or multifamily dwelling units and getting in and addressing those very proactively.
Thank you. And then I have a few questions in terms of, on the line item budget. And I don't know if it's maybe worth us sitting down because the, even though the line item budget is supposed to be a little bit more detailed, you can't really, I, at least I can't tell what you guys are funding by some of the, the items that you guys outline. So for example, on page 43, you guys have professional services consulting outside, 2.4, 2.4 million. I don't really know what, what we're covering for that. Or public relations and information. What are you guys using $91,000 for? Is it helping get the word out on certain things, you know, public outreach? What is it that you guys fund with that? Also for the professional services, non-con consulting, 200, 233,000. I'm not trying to be nitpicky, I'm just trying to understand what is it that you guys are funding?
We can- We can certainly get the specific detail. We have contracts with outside agencies to perform plan review services for us, structural review services, our planning entitlements, our basic planning entitlements, so that we can more effectively streamline applications that come in the office, that may be either complex structural applications, that we need additional assistance, or they're an easier entitlement that we can get out the door. We have a multitude, for example, of cell phone tower applications on a regular basis. We can outsource that to someone who can process those very quickly. It does not take away from our team who stands at the front counter and assists those persons who are coming in.
So maybe if you guys could give me a breakdown of kind of what are those things funding? That would be helpful.
Absolutely.
And then also, looking at premium pay, what does that mean?
So we have a number of individuals who hold high-level certifications, such as architects and engineers, and we have a very hard time attracting those individuals to come to work for the City of Fresno. Right now, the economy is very strong, and we cannot compete on a salary basis. So we provide premium pay to individuals who uphold and maintain those certifications, and allow us then to actually plan review some of our applications that otherwise we would have to outsource.
And so we've been utilizing the entire amount, and we need more? Is that? These aren't being used like for one-time bonuses?
No.
Okay. Just making sure. What about commission stipends? Are those for like our planning, our planning commission?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. Those are, those are an annual amount that are put in there, and that is specifically for the planning commission stipends, for the commission members.
Okay. I was just wondering, because we went from $13,000 to $23,000. So is that, did they receive more? Or what are these, how do we, how much do we pay, I guess, in stipends? Because there's a, there was an $8,000 increase. I'm just wondering, did they receive a raise in terms of their stipend, or?
So what, we have a number of commissions that we support. We have the Planning Commission, we have the Historic Preservation Commission, and we have the Housing and Community Development Commission. A number of those commissions were not fully staffed, did not have the full complement of individuals last year. They are now all fully, have fully appointed, and so we have the full need for those dollars.
So in terms of for, okay, so there were additional appointees, and so therefore?
Right, so we had, for example, Housing and Community Development Commission. There, it's a seven-member board. We were down to four members. Takes a quorum at four members to operate, trying to get those appointments to that commission to fully, so that's, you know, almost half that weren't appointed at that time.
Okay. And so the $23,000 will, is that the number for fully staffed commissions?
Yes, for all three of those.
For all three? Okay. Perfect. In the following page, there's money is allocated for clothing and personal supplies, $12,000. I know it's not a lot. What do you guys use those funds for?
Typically, we will give allowances for steel-toed safety boots, for hard hats, for gloves, for those field personnel who need those.
Okay. We have down, replacement of machinery and equipment. We didn't have anything but for this last year until we, I guess the budget was amended. We added $60,000, and so we're allocating again another $60,000. What are you guys using those funds for?
So primarily, those are to replace our computers as well as tablets in the field. So all personnel next year who are field personnel, we will be up and operating with tablets for everyone in the field.
So did the $60,000 for this year, that wasn't enough? That was just first phase?
So it's a combination of replacing our computer systems that we currently have, our PCs on the desk. We had a full, we had a fairly high level of replacement this year. We also have replacement of machinery and equipment. We had, oh, large format scanner. There are some other pieces of equipment in the office that are replaced.
So that, that fund, the $60,000, is for tablets? Because I think there was another line item where it's computers and, I guess, those are desktops? Is there a difference in terms of how we itemize the budget? I just want to know in terms of details.
No, I think, I think that is a combination of office equipment itself, and Jennifer mentioned the scanners that needed to be replaced, and additional equipment with regards to the land management system, the upgrades that are going to have to happen. They also have, I believe, some additional pieces of equipment for copiers and for other such things. But we can get you a list of those if that would be of assistance.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because I think I see a couple of different line items in terms of machinery replacement, or, and so that's what I was wondering. And so she seems to be saying that $60,000 is for the iPads. So I just want to make sure.
No, it's not just the iPads. It's a combination of office equipment, and most of the departments have money in that line item to replace minor pieces of equipment that, that wear out during the course of the fiscal year. But we can definitely get you a list of what will be purchased with that particular line item.
Perfect. Then, two items after, you guys have contract construction, half a million dollars. What is that for?
So when we are required to go out, if there's a building that has burned and we can't get ahold of the property owner, we can secure the facility and we can fence the facility. We can also, if we get to the point that is necessary, although we're holding off on that and trying to enforce compliance, we do demolish properties over, over the course of a year that's necessary to ensure safety for the surrounding neighborhood.
So, this is, we haven't funded it, I guess, in the last few years. What would we do since we didn't have this line item? How would we pay for it, or did we just not do it? Do we need it that bad? Can this money be used for something else?
So what this is, and you're right, we didn't fund it in the past, so the department just had to find the funding. So let's say a house burns down, a vacant home, and it creates a health and safety issue for the residents nearby neighborhood. We tried to get ahold of the property owner, tried to get ahold of the property owner, and can't get any response, can't get compliance. So what the department has done is that they go out and perform the work, or hire a contractor to do it themselves, same thing with securing a building. They incur the costs, and then hopefully sometime in the future get reimbursed. As Jennifer pointed out, there's been a shift recently, in that the City Attorney's Office has engaged with my office via the STOP team, in which we are not, we're far more aggressive. We just took a property owner to court the last three weeks, where the court demanded or directed the property owner to clear the site, rather than us doing it and then leaving the property and hoping in five or 10 years we'd get paid. This may go down over the course of the year, because we're not, I'm going to try to pursue court action, rather than just doing the work and leaving the property. But for right now, we get a number of buildings that either need to be secured, because people have broken in and created an ongoing issue. I'll give you another example. The house in which the five people perished, we are constantly trying to secure. And, and there's a cost associated with that. Ultimately, that building burned. The one next door is creating the same challenge. Now, we could go out right now and demo that home if we wanted to, but what we're doing with Doug's office, and which is why we're adding the positions to the Attorney's Office, is that we're trying to locate the property owner, who's doing a pretty good job of trying to evade us. But what we're trying to do is to get him into court and have him demolish that site, because we've already demolished another site of his at our expense. But this is, needs to be set aside, because there may be some times in which we just need to get in and mitigate the hazard, and then deal with the property owner in court later on.
How did you find the money?
There were other things that we didn't do.
And, and a point of clarification. In prior years, we did actually do some demo, and it was out of a different line item. So if you'll look on page 43, you'll see the specialized services technical, which is 53402. That's where we previously paid for the demo, in amongst other things. That wasn't entirely for demo. There were other things that were paid for out of that line item, but that included the, what demo that they were able to afford to do. So we, we had some funds dedicated to it, but they were, they were obviously not enough.
So how did we come up with this $571,800?
Based on what they've spent over the last year, I think they've already gone through about the $300,000 that they had already appropriated at some point in time. This became, I became aware of it, and they were ready to go out and, plus, you know, Dell being the kind of guy that he is, he was just ready to go out and write a check and write and have another one demolished. We have put off demoing at least two properties already. One, because they pretty much have already used everything they had, and two, it's this different approach that I just told you about, where we're taking the owner to court, rather than trying to chase them and get them to comply. And then, when, because of a lack of responsiveness, we just go ahead and write the check and then wait five or 10 years to be paid back.
Okay. So there's flexibility there, though. Outside agency support, what do we cover with that?
That I will, we'll have to get back to you on that one. I, I think I know what it is, but I want to make sure before I say anything.
So we'll get the detail on that, but that's our payments to the county for use of parking.
Okay. And then special projects? We went from, I think we had a million dollars this last year as amended, and then went, is going down to 472?
Right. So we had paid a portion of the Southwest Specific Plan out of general fund last year, and so that is reducing. We've had a number of special planning projects, and those are currently at, at smaller rates at this point.
So that's why it went down?
Right, they're one-time, one-time kind of special projects. The development code is another example.
So what are, what special project do we have funded with the 472,000?
We continue to have the Southwest Specific Plan, the South, the Roosevelt Specific Plan, the continued planning for downtown and the area surrounding downtown. To complete those projects this year, those will conclude late this summer. So finishing those up and starting our new specific plans for Roosevelt.
Do you guys have any funds included in this budget for, I know I talked to the mayor about the tower specific plan, that hasn't been updated in, gosh, I think, over 20 years?
There's not a specific request in this particular budget, however, that is something that we can-
Can I make the request that we find some funds, maybe in this budget, to at least start considering, I think, the update of the tower specific plan? I don't know how much an update would cost. Do you know?
I couldn't guess at that.
Can you come back to me with, with what would it cost?
Certainly, we could look at a couple of options as it related to the tower district specific plan on a complete rewrite versus a refresh.
Okay. So yeah, if you could bring that before, in the next couple of weeks, before the, before we finalize the budget, that'd be great. Thank you. I think those are the, the questions that I had. I may have some more, but if I do, I will talk to you guys over the next couple of days. But I'll wait also for the information that you guys will provide in terms of the additional information on those line item questions that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Soria. Member Baines?
Thank you, Council President. And I'll be, I'll be brief, because I've got to run out of here right after these line of questioning, so I have a, yeah, it won't be a Trump rally, Councilmember Brandow. You can be assured, you can be assured of that. I know, I won't make your wish come true. But, so just really quickly, Jennifer, I'm going to run through some of these thoughts that I had and see where we are. So first off, I'm just wondering where we are with respect to clearing the issues with HUD. I know we talked about that a little while ago. Kind of where are we at with that right now?
So we have, we feel really good about the progress that we've made over the last year. As you know, we've been having bi-weekly phone calls with our representatives in the San Francisco office, going through point by point, making sure that, that we have the question correct, that we've provided them with the right answers. We have a large amount and a large bulk of those answers are in their court at this point. Right now, they've asked us to conduct some additional mapping and data collection for them. On one of the items, we're providing, should be providing that to them in the next couple of weeks. We hope to have all of these items cleared this year. That is our absolute goal, and our commitment is that we have been working very hard on that. And I really appreciate my team, the administration, as well as San Francisco office, really helping us make sure that we get all of those items cleared.
Okay, and we can have a kind of a written update from that?
Sure.
Okay, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
And are we still holding on to that $500,000 for the repayment? Or how are we, what are we doing with that?
That was reprogrammed in the annual action plan, when you reprogrammed that on May 12th, the $3.5 million. So that was reprogrammed into capital activities. There is a hold in the city's general fund budget of $500,000. We, I'm really hoping that we do not have to use that, but that is in the general fund right now.
Now, why do we do, why do we, why do we do that that way? Why don't we take it out of the, the CDBG allocation and put it into the general fund, hold it in the general fund?
So, in evaluation, that was a concern that was raised by the City Council last summer, was, hey, if we don't have to use our federal dollars to repay this obligation from prior years, can we please reprogram it for capital activities? We wanted to-
Thank you for reminding me, very gently. Yes, we did do that.
Yes.
Didn't we say for nonprofits?
And yes, you, that was, that was one of the items, was nonprofits. So $500,000 of the, of what you reprogrammed was specifically for nonprofit capital activities that were applied for last year. So it was last year's dollars, last year's application, yes. In terms of putting into the general fund, we felt that it was, it was best practice just to hold that as, as a contingency, in case there was a repayment. We did not want to have to impact funded programming.
Okay. And, and I understand recently, I just found out a couple of days ago, that we lost our housing manager. So you know the, and I'll say this lightly, the fits that I threw for, you know, 18 months or so, because we didn't have one. Do we have an interim housing manager? Are we, how soon are we going to start the recruitment and whatnot?
So, as you know, I was very fortunate to ask Kelly Fortato to be my Assistant Director for Neighborhood Services section of the department, which includes housing. She has been in all of those HUD meetings and is very instrumental in sitting down with the team on a weekly basis to ensure that we're moving forward as we're trying to identify and fill that position. So that is a high priority on our list.
Okay, so if I heard that right, so Kelly's kind of the interim housing manager?
Kelly and I are-
She's smiling at me back there.
Are sharing a lot of that responsibility.
Okay.
Right.
Well, I just want to, again, I know that Kelly's more than capable of that, but I just want to make sure that we start the recruitment soon and get us a qualified housing manager in there. I think personally that some of the problems we had with HUD were because we didn't have the right housing, you know, we didn't have the right staff, managerial staff in there. So I just don't want us to slip back in anything like that, so.
Right.
It's a high priority for me, finding us a housing manager.
Absolutely.
So kind of, I have a parking question, which, which I, going through here, realized parking was under, was under DARM now, which makes total sense, because Dell's under you guys. So I see, I kind of got how everything, everything shifted. But, so, this question initially arose because of my going back and forth to the zoo, but then as talking with staff, I realized, you know, my staff, that we kind of have- then as talking with staff, I realized, you know, my staff, that we kind of have a larger issue. So S and P is our, are our new contractors for parking in the city, in our city structures. Why don't we have the ability to use debit or credit cards to pay for parking?
Actually, that is underway. And let me, Dell, do you want to address that?
Okay.
We, we are working to change out the equipment that's necessary to do that.
Okay. So this is, this is an hour issue in city, city issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, Dell, Esther, for code enforcement and parking services. We have two projects ongoing for parks. One is to change out all the ancient gate arm equipment that's out there right now and put new equipment in that does everything. Installation and procurement of it. And I'm working on a proposal with the city manager's offices probably within six months. In the interim, we have, just like everybody else, has a new smaller version. It's going to operate a very small PC unit or with the phone, I'm hoping within the next two weeks. Three at the outset that have it up and running. And that is through our Heartland system here in City Hall.
Okay. Because, because really the global question I have is why isn't our parking a little bit modernized? And it sounds like we're heading in that direction. And I want to make sure, and this is really specific for, for Greg, because, because he tells me this problem he runs into, is the ability to buy monthly passes. Will, will that, will that be a part of this update?
Yes, sir. Sure will.
Okay. Great. Great. Okay. Thank you, Dell, because I, I get hit up all the time and I, and I can remember a couple of times just going to the zoo, not having five bucks on me and, you know, like, okay, I gotta, you know, run the car back. And I'm like, wait a minute, how come I just can't pay with my card? You know, so I'm glad, glad to hear that we're going to be doing that. And so moving to kind of moving on to code enforcement, so with our vacant building registry, so I know that our, we, you know, as of December 31st, it said that we were 40% underway with cleaning up those, what we consider the blighted, the blighted properties, kind of that six month, you know, almost six months ago. Where are we at today with that?
Those are, we are still working toward getting those other 60% or in compliance with the ordinance. We've, we've, it's much slower. That first 40%, wow, I was like, gosh, if we can keep going, and it was what, what the city manager had spoken about previously, how do we move people from non-compliance to compliance more quickly? 40% were motivated by a bill, right? So how do I move the other 60%? They haven't been necessarily motivated by a bill, so we're moving down the path of additional enforcement on those properties and, and pushing those, those individuals into compliance. We will have that full end of the year report for you probably in early July.
Okay. And I'm, and I'm going to be very, very curious to see that. And so the, the other, the other part of my question along that is do we keep like a rolling number? So I know we started with the initial, whatever the 100% pie was and we got 40%, do we, are we rolling that number?
Yes. And we, we keep a rolling number. Obviously, there are always new properties that are rolling on-
Sure.
And there are other properties rolling off. So we do keep a rolling number. I can get that for you-
Yeah.
-as part of this request. I don't have that off the top of my-
No, I didn't think you would, but I was just curious as I know we started with whatever that first number was, but I can imagine that, you know, every quarter or so-
Yes.
-that number probably is, could be significantly different-
Right.
-from, based on who's coming off and who's coming on. Okay. So, so you said we're going to have that report to end of July, obviously the, the end of the year report on that?
Yeah. We can get you the current number, but we'll get you that full report of how many new came on after the initial study, how many have rolled off, so that you know where, where we are in terms of our current status. In August, we will do our one-year review.
Okay.
So we'll go out and we'll do a citywide sweep again to see where we are in comparison to our initial baseline data, which was something that the, the mayor's task force was very, very adamant that we did was an annual review-
Right.
-to ensure that we're not missing something, so we're being proactive and identifying houses. We're not waiting for someone to let us know. We're actually going out and checking.
Okay. Very good. And then finally, I won't be able to get through, through everything I wanted to ask today, which I'm sure you're so very upset about. But does this budget include kind of the, the infrastructure for rolling out the internal inspection program?
It does not. So what we have been doing, as you know, with task force, the second phase of the mayor council task force on code enforcement is evaluating and looking at proactive rental inspections. How does that occur? How does that, how is that implemented? And we've had really good debate and dialogue as, as to how that would roll out, but we aren't at a point to put dollars on a piece of paper as to how many people that would take, how much money and what timeframe. We're looking at a couple of more meetings of that task force before we have a finalized proposal. And at that point, we would come back to the city council with that proposal, including a timeline and a budget and a scope.
Okay. So we, we would potentially be talking about maybe a mid-year appropriation or something like that?
Right.
Is that, is that what we're thinking about?
Yeah.
Okay. When do we think we'll have that ready to present to council? I'm assuming fall at this point.
It, it's going to be fall at this point, based on just the conversations that we've had with the task force, really trying to get our head around how, how would you implement it? There have been a, a lot of really good inputs and getting the right fit, the right program to recommend to the city council has, has been a challenge.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Council President.
Thank you, Member Baines. Member Brandow, it's your opportunity.
All right. Jennifer, I really only have three different areas of questions. My first one's the easiest one. A West area specific plan, which we were tentatively calling River West with some objection, but the River West area specific plan, west of 99, is it funded in this, in this budget?
In our current fiscal year, FY16, the one that will end on June 30th, there was $50,000 appropriated by the city council. As we know, there has been, these large area specific plans are significantly more expensive.
Yeah. We talked about like $750,000, right?
That was not what was appropriated last year. So what was appropriated was funding to, to manage the specific planning process and to, there was 150,000, I believe, that was funded last year specifically. So what our, what we are, our effort is to get us toward a specific plan for that area because we know that it is important is to use those dollars to do a market study, to analyze, to assess where should we focus that specific plan to try and maybe bring down that cost a little bit. Those specific plans for that area, that size of an area are running anywhere from 750 to a million dollars at this point.
Yeah.
So we want to make it as efficient as possible. So using that $50,000 to do a market study rather than to, like, rather than to try and, and do a full-blown specific plan for $50,000, which just-
No, for sure. So, yeah. And so really, it's a study on how to do a study?
It's, it's a study on where we should focus our study.
I mean, that sounds bad, but that's really what it is.
What, what is the market? If we just did a generic specific plan for that area, we may-
Miss the mark.
Miss the mark.
Okay.
So we're, we're going to target that to the right market segment, which is exactly what the industry would do.
I understand. The 150,000 that we, that was appropriated last year, that money's, is that money all spent?
So it was $100,000 for a position to manage the specific plans because we have so many underway all at the same time.
Oh, okay.
And $50,000 to initiate a specific plan. So that was, that was the intent of those dollars was to initiate a specific plan.
So the hundred, 100,000 of that 150 kind of went in a pool to hire a person for all the specific plans that Fresno's working on?
Right. Southwest, southeast. Yeah.
So the 50,000 from last year's budget, has that been spent or is that sitting?
No. We, we are in the process of, of looking to have that under contract by the end of June so that we can have by mid-fall to late-fall an understanding of what that market, come back to the city council with that presentation so that you understand what do you want to look for? Is it worth doing a full specific plan, West area? Or is there not enough market demand to grow in that area? Or can we scale it back to a smaller community plan or a neighborhood plan for the next budget cycle?
Well, I think it's considered phase one for, phase one growth area, right?
It is a phase one growth area, absolutely.
Right. So I mean, the city of Fresno is, is planning on, on spending some, the city of Fresno's planning on growing-
Absolutely.
-in that area of town. Okay. So we have 50,000 sitting over from last year and we're going to add 50,000 this year? Is that, is that what you're saying? That there was 50,000 in last year's budget and there's 50,000-
No, no. There's 50,000 for the market study. Once that's completed, we'll be able to understand what, how to scope and put out the specific plan for the, for next fiscal year.
But it's safe to say we're going to need a specific plan of some magnitude?
To update, the current West area specific plan is dated, as are most of the specific plans. So to bring that current is going to take additional planning work, absolutely.
So do you think that there's any rationality for adding money in the budget to begin setting aside money for that specific plan, like a quarter million dollars?
So I, I would really like to see the results of the market study first to understand how much we're going to need. And it could come back at a, at a mid-year appropriation of a recommendation. But, you know, it, planning is, is that setting the base of good policy. Obviously, how do we grow in a way that is fiscally sustainable and is prudent for our community is really critical. So good, good planning and basis of, of good policy is really important. Making sure we're not doing too many at the same time, which dilutes the, the impact in the industry and in the market is somewhat of a concern. But we certainly are supportive of good policymaking and good planning as that basis.
I understand that. And for me, good policy on this issue would also include that these specific plans are very expensive, 750,000 to a million dollars. And it's really hard to fund them in any one year. So what I've seen in the past is they're funded multi-year. And I think that we, I think we need to start pooling that money together so that we eventually have the money to do the full plan. Now, granted, if the 50,000 market study comes back and says, don't waste a million dollars out there, I mean, we could simply take that, whatever money that we set aside, I'm hypothetically saying $250,000, we could take that money and pull it out of the budget, right? But we could insert it in the budget this year and begin to pool that money to do that plan appropriately, right?
Sure.
Could do that. Okay.
I, I would-
Budget's all about priorities. So you could take and put hypothetically half a million dollars over here, but it's got to come from somewhere else.
Understood. Understood.
We just don't put half a million dollars into a budget. That would make it life way too easy.
Thank you, Bruce. All right. Jennifer, my next one, and it's too bad that Councilman Baines walked away because it's one of his favorite subjects, is the High Speed Rail. On page 39, B39, it says that we're carrying a $750,000 negative carryover. So what, what's going on there?
So we have an agreement, a contract with the High Speed Rail Authority for a couple of things. One is to assist businesses with relocation. And the other is our stationary master plan to plan for economic development and growth opportunities around the station in the future. So anything that would be a negative fund balance, and Jane can, can address this probably further, would be what we have spent that we are waiting for reimbursement. So it's, it's just really a timing of money issue in terms of, of we have a contract for them to pay us. They, we're just waiting on the timing.
And is, is that considered, Jane, is that $750,000, at what point does that become a red alert to you?
It becomes a red alert to me when somebody tells me that High Speed Rail isn't going to pay us back. As far as I am aware, the contracts are still in place and that it is simply a matter of timing that eventually we will get our money for the work that we have, have put into the project. And so until such time, if somebody tells me that there is no reimbursement coming, then it is not a red flag.
Okay.
It is a timing issue and that's all that it is.
All right. Thank you. So Jennifer, for, what, what type of personnel, personnel are involved in the city of Fresno's contract with High Speed Rail, which is talked about on page B41? So in this year's budget, it's 3.28 million in appropriations. Is that correct?
We have one staff person in planning. We have a part of a person in building. The remainder is a contract with the EO, with the EDC, the Economic Development Corporation. And I believe that Ms. Eager was here a few weeks ago to present a large report to the city council and those staff members who were involved in the High Speed Rail program and assisting businesses in the relocation program or, and she reported on it at that time. So that's, that's the predominant use of the, of those dollars.
Is it a flow through, through the city of Fresno's budget-
Yes.
-to EDC?
Yes.
Okay. So we really only have one, one and a half persons inside of the city of Fresno that are working on this, right?
Right.
Okay. And then, so we're not spend, sending out public works people to accomplish tasks?
We, we review, no, not to do construction. We evaluate and review their, their plans, doc, plan documents, their engineering documents when they come in to pull permits. But we are not doing the actual construction. I, you know, would defer to other departments on-
Sure.
-physical construction projects.
But for sure, code enforcement does, you know, we're talking a lot about code enforcement. Is it chewing up any code enforcement personnel?
Um, no. Not, not specifically for this, out of this fund, no.
All right. Thank you. Now finally, on to code enforcement, and I really appreciate what Council, Councilman Quintero was talking about here 20 minutes ago, 30 minutes ago. And I agreed with a lot of the stuff that he was sharing with his personal experience in his district. Of course, my district has different types of code enforcement problems, but there's still code enforcement problems that I could easily relate to. So I have a question. It says on, it says that revenues are up on page B39. Is that mostly through ticketing, through people paying the-
Correct. Correct.
We're, we're getting more aggressive, right?
So we, we issued, per Councilmember Baines' question, we issued a lot of citations last year related specifically to our vacant blighted building program. Over the years, what we see in terms of revenue is about 40% of a prior year's citations end up as revenue in the following year. So we had an uptick in the value of those citations that we wrote. So we're seeing an uptick in the potential collections of those, which are, are paid out either by the owner themselves or through, through a property tax citation.
Well, I'm, I'm very glad to hear that and I want to extend kudos to the code enforcement department for, for doing that and following through on that. And also that we're going to add some, probably hypothetically add some personnel to the city attorney's office to even beef that up, the collection of those-
Absolutely. And that's the, that's the critical piece and that's the shift. And, and I think that it's important for us to, to really address the fact that doing the same thing over the years has not gotten us the result that we wanted. So we need to change how we're doing this. And part of that is bringing in the attorneys, two attorneys and two support ta, staff specifically into that team to address those issues and to move to compliance more quickly. Compliance is the ultimate goal.
Totally agree. And I've had a lot of conversations since code enforcement has come to the forefront again, unfortunately due to the, to the slum housing issue that we had faced. So code enforcement has come back to the forefront of conversations in the public. And, and in my interactions with the public, they're essentially demanding that the city of Fresno begin charging people for their violations. And so I'm glad that you guys are on top of that and code enforcement's already aggressively changing that. So-
We, yes. We, that has always been an important part of code enforcement is citations and fines and then the administrative cost of performing the services. The key is, is getting those citations paid, thus the assistance of the city attorney's office and also compliance. So it's, it's not one or the other. If we only had compliance, we wouldn't need to worry as much about the payment because everyone would be in compliance.
Okay. And then I actually have a question for our city attorney then. So city attorney, currently you're going to add, they're going to, hypothetically, it's presented in this budget to add some positions in your office to, you know, to go after more even- to go after more, even more money that's not been paid to the City of Fresno, is that right?
Yes, it would be two lawyers, a paralegal, and a secretary, and it's not just to go after more money, but to gain compliance, too.
To gain compliance, right, to gain compliance, so that means the problem's fixed, and the City of Fresno gets paid for the violations.
We'd get paid for the violations, any abatement costs, and be reimbursed for our attorney fees.
And remind me again, how many positions are, are we looking to add? Is this budget call for?
Uh, for our office, two lawyers, a paralegal, and a secretary, four.
And, and, and you were a part of that conversation, so?
Yes.
You feel comfortable that that's enough personnel to?
That would put a big dent in it, yes.
Okay, is there, so I have a secondary question related to that. Is there any way to move some of the functions of code enforcement underneath your office and then underneath the purview of city council?
Well, the, we have a city ordinances right now that give the city attorney's office authority to prosecute certain code offenses. To do that, we rely upon staff to bring us the evidence, the inspectors mainly. I suppose similar to the DA's office, the city attorney's office could have investigators that could go out in the field and collect evidence, that would be.
Investigators, do you mean inspectors or code inspectors?
Yeah, in the DA's office, they call them in, investigators, but it would be functionally the same thing.
So, so we could hypothetically move some of the functions of code inspections underneath the city attorney's office?
It's theoretically possible, yes.
That doesn't, that doesn't require a charter amendment?
I don't think it would require a charter amendment, it's not like we're replacing the department and putting another city attorney's office, it's augmenting a function of the city attorney's office.
Okay, okay, I, I want to talk with you about that offline then and see maybe more what that would look like. I'd be more interested in.
If I could, I, I would certainly be interested and be part of that conversation as well, given the charter says that all the employees, except for the very few exceptions, report to the city manager, not to the city attorney, and not to the council.
Okay, agreed, we'll, we'll definitely include you, Bruce, at the right time. Okay, um, and one of the reasons for my thought there dovetails what, with the conversation that Councilman Quintero started off, started us off this morning is, it seems to me, Jennifer, that even before you be, you, you came on to the City of Fresno, that I've seen so many different variables, I've been a council member for four years, and I probably believe I've seen four annual attempts at what code enforcement's supposed to look like, and definitely see some improvement with these, with the ticketing going up here, but when I hear the historical past of what Councilman Quintero is relating and, and some of the other ongoing issues with code enforcement, I have to start thinking that maybe there's a better way, and so that's where some of those thoughts come from, so.
Well, let me, let me add, absolutely agree with you.
You do agree?
There is a better way, and we're working on a better way, and maybe what would be helpful for you as well as the rest of the council, is that we kind of go over some of the changes that we've already made in the last four to six months, some other things that are in the works to change, this, you know, approach that we took, I just shared with you about the amount of money that we spend chasing owners of burned-out properties because we can't get them to comply. There's a change there, there's a shift, because in the past, we would just keep knocking on our door and finally throw our hands up and go do the work and then incur the cost, and then someday get paid back, but we're not doing that anymore. We're also looking at, we're going to, in some cases, the amount of time that it takes to get to the first citation to second citation, depending on the level of, of, or deficiencies that we're finding, we, we in many cases may go straight to an administrative citation. There's some cases where we may not even go to a hearing officer, we're going to go straight to court, and those are the kind of things that are going to get compliance, again, as Director pointed out. The revenue is one thing, but it's the compliance, and then there's the overall holistic approach into this, because some of our biggest problems from a public safety standpoint, I think I've shared with you, we have, we have a condominium complex in southeast Fresno that's had twelve hundred calls for police service in one year, which is why recently you adopted changes to the, to the property management ordinance, because until then, there was really nothing we could do with a homeowners association or a condominium complex because they're all individually owned. But we'll give you a very long and comprehensive list of changes that have already been made and changes that are forthcoming, that are already within the purview of, of, of my office, but for whatever reason, and I don't pay attention to a whole lot of things in my rear view mirror unless it's a black and white car and with blue and red lights, there are some things that we can already do, that we're going to do, for example, as I said, cutting down the time that it takes to get compliance or even to get citations issued, because some property owners are very good at, at coming up with very clever ways to keep pushing that ball down the road, we're looking now to compress that time very aggressively, and in some cases, you won't get the obligatory write-up, and then you get eighteen days to comply, and then you get another thirty days because we issue a second citation. It may be, the conditions that we find are so egregious that we're going to move right to an administrative citation, and if you do not fix these things within a reasonable amount of time, then we're going to court. Those are the changes, that's the shift that Jennifer's talking about, because I absolutely agree with you, and I've said this before, if we just go back and do what we've always done, the outcome is not going to be any different than it has been, and you are absolutely right, that is why we've got to change the way we approach code enforcement.
Well, all right, good, it sounds like we're moving the same direction then, but one thing Councilman Quintero talked about is that he's gone back into neighborhoods where we spent a heavy amount of money on code enforcement, only to find that they've slipped back into, you know, disrepair, you know, the previous, he said, starting over again. And so when I hear that, and especially, so I agree, Bruce, what you're focusing on is getting compliance and also recovering the cost, but what Councilman Quintero was talking about, what I'm talking about, is the, the mission of code, maybe, maybe as it applies to these fifteen code officers that are for specific areas only, and, and then when do we have that conversation? Bruce, the time to have that conversation is before the city council and the administration together decide to fund it. I mean, if it's not, if it's not working properly, why should we fund it? We should figure out, I mean, if we know that it hasn't been working properly and we continue to fund what hasn't worked in the past, that, that seems like a time to call a halt to that. So when do you want to have that conversation with council about code?
Uh, we could have it next thirty days, be happy to. We'll tell you exactly some of the things that we have found, you know, I joke with Dell and the rest of my team, every time we, we meet the stop team, there's another string that gets attached, and there's different iterations of, of code issues and variations, whether it's a property owner who refuses to demo a home that's burned, to a condominium complex that's owned by a hundred and eighty, two hundred different individuals, to the whole legal process to get a property owner in front of a judge. We've got one right now, which goes back to, you gotta go back and watch the, look at the play tape to see where you can improve. We have one case right now that we started in January, that we just recently got in front of a judge about two or three weeks ago, and he's given the property owner, he's directed the property owner, "You have to do X amount of work within thirty days." Well, my point is, it's six months. The quality of life and the living conditions for those individuals living in that apartment complex really hasn't changed. So Doug and I are challenging each other, is how do we reduce that time? What steps can we take? So for example, historically, as was the case over here, we start off with a notice, "Here are your violations, you get the obligatory eighteen days," then we come back, you don't do any work, then we send, issue a citation, then we come back later on, and we, you still haven't done any work, we issue another citation. Now generally, what happens is that ends up in front of an appeal officer, which could be three months later, and then the appeal officer makes a determination, it used to be that the appeal officer say, well, whether or not the citation revenue was appropriate, but the hearing officer never was compelled to direct the property owner to correct those problems. You recently adopted a change that now compels the hearing officer, at a minimum, forget the revenue, at a minimum, compel the owner to make the, the corrections. In this case, we didn't even take the property owner to a hearing officer, we took him in front of a judge. So those are the things I'd be more than happy to lay out for you, and then some things that we're going to implement over the next sixty days, are either going to reduce the timeline to get compliance through a far more aggressive process than, than we have in the past.
So Bruce, when I hear you respond, I think you're talking about the real big stuff, and I, and I see definite improvement on the real big stuff, okay? So I agree with you on the real big stuff, but what I think, what councils, what I hear from council, there's three, Councilman Quintero started off, three or four other council members spoke before I have, there's a lot of little things that if we could be a little bit better at nipping them in the bud early on, Councilman Quintero talks about cars parked on jacks with cobwebs in his neighborhoods, right? You know, and in council district two, we don't have a lot of cars on jacks gathering cobwebs, but we certainly have smaller code enforcement violations, and I think, I think the City of Fresno is moving correctly on the big stuff, but I would like to see how we can improve some of the response on the small stuff as well, and so that's why I have questions about hypothetically moving some of that underneath the purview of city council, where we have a more direct access to what we feel we need done in our, in our council districts. So to be more responsive on the frontline with the residents and get those smaller things dealt with quicker and faster while we allow you to, to tackle those big issues, which I think you're doing a good job on.
And Councilmember Brandau, if I may, one of the, the purposes of this proactive code enforcement isn't just to identify all of the problems and get them corrected, it's also to identify solutions, creating sustainability for those neighborhoods so that when we go back, they don't, they, they don't have the same issues time and time again. It's identifying those key institutions, providing capacity within the neighborhood that will allow for those neighborhoods to continue to support and, and, is, support healthy neighborhoods, support neighborhoods where you don't have those non-compliant property owners within, within the neighborhood.
Well, Jennifer, I agree with the motive of fixing those neighborhoods, but I'm hearing that after a couple of years, they're back in the same disrepair that they were previously to, the big heavy lift of going into a single or one or two neighborhoods at a time and doing a complete neighborhood overhaul, and letting all the surrounding neighborhoods, which are really very similar, continue with this slow move towards dilapidation, and, and so my questions are more, you know, I think the motive is great, but I've got to question the process. Is that the best use of attacking neighborhood decline in the City of Fresno is to target certain neighborhoods at a time? Or do we go back in time a little bit and begin to ramp up, "Hey, you can't do that, you can't do that, and you can't do that," and, and see where that gets us? Because, I mean, I'm hearing that the specific neighborhood approach might not be working, so I have concerns about that that I want to find out more about, and so thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Member Brandau. Member Brand?
Thank you, some of the questions have already been asked, but on the negative fund balance, just looking at the overall combined operations, they seem to always come in, I'm just looking back on page eight, B dash forty-two, from minus ten million in two thousand fourteen into FY two thousand seventeen, almost five million dollars, is that the grants that aren't, and the revenues aren't matching?
Yes, that's what it is, and it's a timing issue again, and so that, part of it's High-Speed Rail, part of it is, is CDBG, and it's just a natural progression of, we have to incur the expense, and then we get it reimbursed, and so that's, it's just a timing issue.
You said the same for CDBG, too, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, so, and the reason I said that, because it wasn't that long ago, when my first term, when we had, DARM was an enterprise department, and DARM had went through a boom period during the great, you know, real estate bubble from two thousand and one to two thousand and six, and I believe it built up a ten million dollar reserve, and that reserve evaporated within four years, so we're always a little leery on, and now that it's a general fund department, which I think is better anyway, it's probably more appropriate. On parking, we had this big discussion with the city manager, and I see it in here, and it's a big loser financially, have we have any plans to consider, you know, selling any of the structures?
No, but we do have an item coming back to council in the next week or so to expand upon the study, the initial study that we've done, that we've come back with some recommendations on a parking rate, or changes to the parking rate and parking rate strategies. The other thing I'm working on right now with Public Works in facilities and with the Parking Division is trying to understand if I'm looking at comparable parking garages that are being operated by the private sector, why our expenses are, appear to be higher than those, so you've heard me talk a lot about ninety dollars a stall outside garages, they're charging about a hundred dollars a month. I've recently looked at some numbers from a garage that's run by, is privately owned, and the difference between their garage, and I'll use Garage Eight, and their garage, is they have debt service on that garage, they're paying for the capital, initial capital outlay, and it's buried in that hundred dollar per stall cost. We don't have any debt service, but our cost is still ninety dollars or so, or seventy dollars just to keep the lights on, or ninety with depreciation. So we've got to get a better handle on what the expense side looks like, and if there's a way to reduce that expense side in conjunction with maybe some adjustments to the parking rates, and, or to at least get it at a break even, but as it stands right now, the parking fund, as you know, is, continues to be challenged, and that is even before we take into account deferred capital that's, that these facilities need.
Remember in two thousand and ten, we had this parking garage, I kept saying, "Why are we losing so much money?" Well, we have a plan to repay the money that is corrected, where there never was a plan, it was just draining the budget, but parking is a major revenue loss for the City of Fresno, and we need to, I think, put more priority on addressing this issue and finding a solution of including selling the garages, of finding more efficient ways to operate them in the future, having private developers pay for their own garages, and for the city, maybe going on surface parking lots, which are substantially less expensive to, to operate. So I'd really like to emphasize that we continue focusing on that issue. One thing that's really not been addressed, but it's central to your department, is this whole thing of the business-friendly, the counter permitting, plan check process, and I know a big component is its Acela software that we've talked about for years, that we finally have this fully budgeted, Jennifer?
Yes, as of this upcoming fiscal year, it will be fully budgeted. The city council last week actually entered into a contract with Acela to perform the services and provide the software necessary for us to have a much more streamlined process for land management. That includes not only our entitlements, but also includes our building plan review, permitting, it includes code enforcement, it includes some functions of maps that are included in Public Works, so fire department will be able to have their digital plan review, which is something they've been wanting for a long time, so there, there's a lot of improvements.
GIS-based, right, and we talked about this in the Asset Management Act, about getting this inventory where you can have a database of all the properties, with entitlements, history, all this stuff, so somebody could go online and pull a permit online and also follow the plan check process as it progresses, right?
Correct.
I mean, I think this, this software would make a huge difference, and some of the issues I've, since I've been here for seven and a half years, about the complaints of how long it takes to go through the process and an overall frustration, so I'd like to see that finally, the migration period, any, that like six months or?
We anticipate that the full implementation will take approximately eighteen months, so that's building the system, migrating the data, and implementing each of the facets of the program.
Right, and that is continued, is it, is the Business-Friendly Fresno still active? Is it concluded, or?
So we continue to report on a quarterly basis, and we continue to have our bi-weekly department meetings with the city manager to go over projects that are stuck in the system, that are challenged, so we're continuing to implement all of the. So we're continuing to implement all of the, all of the goals of Business Friendly Fresno as well as providing those ongoing reports.
Okay. And finally, I want to touch on an area that others have touched on, this whole thing on, you know, code enforcement. And you've really got several issues really under, one is substandard housing, sustainable neighborhoods, and there's no easy solution here other than having, I think, the general plan itself provide the umbrella and really the mechanism if we stick to it, to put, you know, to refocus on all these, you know, these neighborhoods. For the past three months, I've walked through District Four, District Seven, District One, and I see the same problems that Sal was talking about, where you have home in the neighborhood, the lawn, I mean, it's just dead, there's weeds three feet high, there's a car on, on jacks. I mean, there's, there's a lot of that stuff out there, and some of those, of course, owner occupied too, they're not just all tenant occupied, that, I don't know how we embrace this problem, and, and, because right now this focus is, you know, on this substandard housing, but it's really, it's much bigger than that on our neighborhoods. And I think, you know, one of the components I see is increasing the owner occupancy. You know, we had that Neighborhood Stabilization Program, which did, I think, a lot of good in neighborhoods, trying to get more of a, you know, a participation by the neighbors, but that, those funds are gone now, but we, this is a major problem facing the city that we need to, to find. And I think what the city attorney and city manager trying to be more aggressive, have better tools to, to work with on code enforcement, maybe sometime before the year's over, we need to measure, you know, the end results of some of these changes we've made on the, the vacant building ordinance, you know, the 30 days, increasing the fines, and all those things we can use within our toolbox to make a better city. But again, I don't blame you, there's no simple solution out there, and a lot of it is simply, really, it's just simply having the resources to do that. And at this point in time, we don't have the resources, but I think we need to find a way to do that, to engage the neighborhoods. And to Sal's point too, about the focus on the Lowell area, I think in the future, if we just use maybe census tract data on poverty, because I know at that point in time, there was unfortunately several census tracts that had the same demographics, that we just maybe prioritize those and just work backwards, and find a way that, once you've went through a neighborhood and you've made these improvements, that it's not a transitional, as soon as you leave, everything falls apart. We've got to find a way to build a platform that sustains those neighborhoods, and it, I think it all starts with, you know, people taking pride with it, renters, homeowners, people having jobs, and, and I, again, my, my vision is lifting the city, not always trying to find, and we need affordable housing, but if people had good paying jobs, they wouldn't have to go to affordable housing, they could go to market rate housing, and I, that's part of the solution to maintaining neighborhoods. So, thank you for, and you're the Budget Staff for your, your time.
Thank you, Member Brand. The screen is clear, and I want to give kudos to you and your team in working with all of you to improve Fresno and all our districts. So you all do a great job, and I want to encourage you to continue to do that. And I'm encouraged by the comments of the city manager, and I think a workshop within 30 days, at least before my Montana vacation, August 16th, or July 16th. Be nice to have that, and then perhaps maybe even a workshop every six months until we all feel comfortable working together to settle some of these issues that we have in our neighborhoods. And, you know, in mine particularly, shopping carts, RVs, abandoned vehicles, we're working on some ordinances there, acts as well. So, and then so it seems like the, there's a two-step process now, and I'd like to add a third element. First is notice fines, fees, and collection process, and that brings us to compliance. And the third thing I'd like to add is preventative approach. And what that means is, I think we should probably consider raising fines and fees, the collection process, making the violator pay for that collection process. I know that's in effect now, but making it much more intense. So if you hit someone in the pocketbook, you might create a fear factor and discourage potential violators that we, we have now. So the third element for me is the preventative approach, and if we can consider that, or get your thoughts on it as far as really intensifying that aspect of it, then people, I think, would consider that as a motivating factor in all neighborhoods, in businesses, slum lords, all the, across the board. So that would be my contribution is a preventative approach. Everything else has been pretty well discussed, I think we have a pretty, pretty, pretty good grip on where we want to go and how we should get there. So thank you for that, and I see Member Quintero would like to add to the comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any comments for you. I just, no, I just want to make a point of order. One of the things that council might consider that made the budget process a lot easier in the past and smoother was that when we wanted to move some money around and make a, a change and say, well, I'd like to see some money put to this, this project or create this, the count, in the past, the council member would usually identify where the money was going to come from, where you were going to take it from to fill that gap. So that's something to consider that, to make the, the process go smoother. So that's just point of order.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Member Quintero. I see it's almost 12 o'clock, so I think after lunch at 1:30, we would start with the city attorney's office, followed by personal services department. So we'll see you back here at 1:30. Thank you all very much for being here. Of our budget hearings, and we have enough council members to proceed. So with that, we're at the city attorney position, and Dr., you have the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Doctor of Law.
First of all, I'll be referring to the hard copy of the PowerPoint that we passed out, starting with page three. But first, I wanted to introduce the management team in our office. Francine Kane, our Chief Assistant for Litigation. Katie Dorr, our Chief Assistant for Transactions. Tina Griffin, our Assistant for Labor and Employment. And Lori Avadision, Assistant for Transactions. And then Noemi Schwartz, our Executive Assistant. And Christina Therrien, our Management Analyst, our Numbers Person. They do a great job of running the office so that I can go deal with you all. First of all, on page three of our handout, I wanted to point out-
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry? Oh, okay. I said five minutes. Wanted to point out a few things from the prior year that explain some of the numbers too. Our outside council costs for litigation were up, but that's because in the last year, we've chosen to take more cases to trial rather than settle. We, we were sued for a total of about $30 million on important cases that we took to trial, and were very successful in those cases. So while we spent a few hundred thousand more in litigation, we potentially saved millions of dollars. And then one other thing on the transactional side primarily, if you look back, turning to the next page.
What page is that, Doug?
Looking now at page four. We receive a lot of our work through what are called requests for legal services. It's a form that comes in and it says, here's what we'd like the city attorney's office to do. And it doesn't include litigation, or doesn't include a lot of the projects directly from you all, but the majority of our work comes in through here that's not litigation. In calendar year 2014, we had 931 RLSs. In 2015, we had 1,584, a 70% increase. And this year, as of May 15th, we already had 754, on track for over 2,000. So in two years, we, we have essentially doubled the amount of work we're handling in the office with adding one lawyer. So I think that indicates that we've got a team of lawyers that are being very efficient at what they're getting done. And then overall, that reflects what's going on with the city overall. Everybody's very busy. As far as the number of positions, turning to, oh, and then also, we provided a report on contract compliance. We are caught up with contract compliance now with all the contracts we've been provided, so we're tracking those. As more contracts are approved, those are being entered. And then also, since we changed how we handle Public Records Act requests, they all go through our office now. Of course, being an election year, we've been extremely busy with that. It's thousands of pages every week that we're processing through Public Records Act requests. Looking at the number of positions authorized in the office on page five, we have a total currently of 35 positions, although one of those is a contract attorney, Lori Donaldson, who provides the, he was the police advisor. So that's up from about five as of three years ago. And the total, the highest total we ever had in the office was about 42. Looking at our budget on the next page, on page six, this year's appropriation is proposed to be about 4.9 million. The increase reflects adding potentially the four code enforcement positions, and then some other increase in employee costs, plus the extra payroll that Jane was mentioning earlier. If you look at where we're projected to finish this fiscal year, we're projected to end up with about $40,000 left over. That's really about perfect budgeting. That's coming in with about less than 1% left over. So that's what the numbers are. Looking at our contract council costs on the next page, on page seven, although our, the contract council costs are not largely through our office, we manage, of course, the outside council. And it breaks it down by year and by the type of legal matter it was. Risk litigation and non-risk litigation is up. That's reflecting the more cases that we've taken to trial and had good results. If you look at labor and transactions, that's down quite a bit. Tina and Felicia in our office are handling a lot more of the labor types of matters in our office rather than sending it out, plus we're not, we haven't had the heavy negotiations going on that we did a few years ago too. And then transactions were less than half of what we spent a few years ago. We're keeping more work in-house, like general plan, housing element, and that kind of thing that previously we might have sent out to expert lawyers on the outside. So overall, our contract council costs are about the same as they were two years ago. And then looking finally at the proposed changes in this year's budget, it's to add one senior lawyer and one more junior lawyer to do code enforcement prosecution, whether it be criminal, civil suits, or administrative hearings. And then to do that, they would need a paralegal and a secretary. And the concept is that we would vary how we've done it before. These people would actually be physically stationed up in code enforcement, so they can work together as a team. So the lawyers can help train some of the inspectors on how you prepare cases that are going to a judge rather than an administrative hearing. Of course, you're bound by rules of evidence and those kinds of things, where you need to be a lot more diligent in how you maintain and collect evidence. So if that's the case, then they would be physically situated up there, they'd be working together as a team, and I think overall, then they would be more effective. The cost for this is budgeted at $273,000 for this next fiscal year because it is proposed to start October 1st. The annual cost for that on an ongoing basis would be about $350,000. So I'll, I'll conclude. I do want to thank the council offices for working with our office, the administration, and all the lawyers and staff in our office, because I think they're doing a bang-up job handling the heavy workload that we have.
Could you repeat that again? Just kidding. That was quick. Brevity ward coming your way. So we'll take it out to the public. Is there anyone in our public that would like to come forward and discuss this issue or matter, this department? Seeing none, we'll close public portion, bring it back here, and Councilmember Soria, it's your opportunity.
Thank you, Council President. I just have two questions, Doug, for you. So just one of them, I wanted to know if there are any carryover vacant positions in the city attorney's office?
I think we have all of our budgeted positions filled right now.
So all of them are filled? Okay, perfect. And then just a question on the line item detail, I think it's page 37, there, there's one for space rentals and one for city hall rent? Is that for storage for records or?
We do have a lot of record storage. That's what it's for?
So is that what the $7,000 is for?
Yes.
Okay, that was it. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Okay. Any other council member like to speak on this particular department? Lee Brand?
Thank you.
Just a few questions, Doug. On the contract compliance, is there one attorney that's assigned that that goes back a couple of years?
There's one paralegal assigned to it.
Okay, and how's that been going?
Actually, or technically two budgeted for contract compliance, although over the last two years, it's morphed into, they both share responding to Public Records Act requests too.
Right.
And so at this point, we are caught up with all of the contracts that we've been provided, so we're managing those contracts, ensuring that the right tickles get made for expiration dates and those kinds of things.
And on, you know, we stepped it up last year when I made those changes on the, the ordinance for the administrative hearings, and we've since added more to that. Can you do me a favor and maybe just track our success measuring?
We, we have that, we've already prepared a report and we can get it to you.
Yes, I'd like to see the difference because that means we're being effective, we're, you know, we're getting people to do things, and the best way to do that, of course, is to collect money and get them in a pocketbook.
Right, we can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I really appreciate the training of the codies, the code enforcement people that pay huge dividends in the long run. As attorneys, we know how important it is in the preparation of the case and training those that are preparing or help prepare the case accordingly. So I think that's a great, great way to do it, and on behalf of the Litigation Reduction Committee, we enjoy working with all of you, and I think we're a great team and we'll continue to do this, so. Excellent, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And the staff as well. Okay. Our next up is Personnel Services Department. Jane, you're in every department, huh?
I am. Personnel Services Department starts on page B 89. It is a general fund and internal service fund department. Its total budget is 32.4 million with 34 positions and 34 FTE. Major changes, this is a very status quo budget, really. There are increases, however, for workers' compensation due to an increase in claims. We also have an expansion of the Alternative Dispute Resolution Program to include ATU. And to increase the transparency in this department as far as reporting on risk funds, we are advocating the split of property and liability funds, and it also increases our ability to track expenses. So that is also reflected within the budget. The revenues for this department are primarily to the general operations, administration, organizational development, training, and labor relations are all funded with the general fund. The internal services are primarily the workers' compensation, risk management, property and liability, and the unemployment program. These are supported by fees to the client departments. Expenditures are primarily 32.4 million, which is an increase of 2.5 million when compared to 16 amended, and this is primarily in the property and the workers' compensation funds. 1.6 million of this is due to increased claim activity and a catastrophic injury which has been sustained in the Fire Department. Also includes increases to excess workers' compensation insurance premiums and $100,000 to expand the ADR program. The staffing, the department is requesting funding for one management analyst, which will be split between property and liability, and will be performing data analysis in support of loss reduction strategies. And also, I believe that's the only position that they are asking for at this time. That concludes my presentation, and I believe the director is here, in case you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Out to the public, anyone wish to come forward and discuss or talk about this particular department? Now is your opportunity. Seeing none, back to the dais, and Councilmember Soria?
Thank you. I have a few questions regarding some of the line item information. I think I'm going to probably repeat myself through every department, but I'd like additional information. I just kind of did a little bit of math on the professional services and consulting. I know that there's several different, in different places that you guys put it, and I've seen about over $2 million allocated for that. I'd like to really know what those dollars are being spent on specifically on those, there are a number of them, I think in every kind of different account, so, like-
Do you have a technical difficulty? Have one moment, please.
I believe in the case of Personnel Services, those funds are used to pay for risk claims and for outside attorneys and outside consultants in, in response to risk cases, but we can get you a detailed listing, but that's primarily- you a detailed listing, but that's primarily what it's used for.
Well, I'd like to see a detailed listing. I know that you guys have it in several different places. It adds up to over $2 million, so I'd just like to know what we're contracting or who we're contracting to.
Right, and most of that will be in the risk funds, which is an internal service fund, so, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Then additionally, I noticed that you guys have included a contingency reserve fund of $250,000. Curious why we need this? The city, we already, as a city as a whole, for the general fund have set aside reserve money?
Okay, this isn't, yeah, this isn't attached to the general fund, this is attached to the, I believe it's the liability, property? The property insurance fund. And what that is, is it somewhat mirrors the SIR that we have for the liability side in that it's a pool of money from which we can pay claims. It's not just general fund, it's from the entire city. And so, it's put in there in order to, for us to be able to pay claims that come against us for property injuries that we have to pay.
But then I also see another line item right below that that says refunds and claims for $1.8 million, so what's the difference there?
Right. The 250 is, again, much like the SIR, and if you'll look at...
So what did we do before? We haven't...
We didn't have that. We actually had to...
So how have we found the money if we needed them?
We had to come back to council and basically charge all the other departments and come back and rebill them during the year in order to afford to pay a claim. And so...
So what was the challenge with that? I'm just wondering.
Not finding the money in order to pay for it.
So did we pay our claims, or have we gone without paying our claims?
We did. No, we found it.
Okay, so we have found the money?
We have found the money, but this is an attempt to...
And how much previously, like what are the amounts of claims? I'm just wondering where you got the $250,000.
Yeah, and I believe that we can probably get you a list of the property claims that we've had to pay within the last 12 months.
That would be helpful. I just want to make sure that it's supportive of the allocation.
It is.
And so, is that similar to the, I guess I'm just wondering because there's all these different, there's another contingency reserve for $3 million...
That's the SIR.
That's the, okay. And then below that, there's the two, another 2.6 million for refunds and claims. I guess I'm trying to figure out the difference because you're saying that the $250,000 is gonna be used for...
By all means.
To refund or for our claims, so...
If I may, so the refunds and claims account is the allocation of funds to address the claims that are paid in that particular line of coverage during the course of the year. What we are anticipating, we're going to spend. When we start this process, we really don't have an absolute understanding of what our ultimate expenses are going to be during the 12-month period of the fiscal year. So there's a contingency built in, which we would have to come back to the council seeking the authority to actually access those funds, to utilize that, to pay for those additional expenses over and above what was budgeted for in the refunds and claims line.
So that would be above the $1.8 million that...
In the property.
Yeah, in the property.
Yes.
And similarly, for the other one, the liability self-insurance.
Right.
Fund.
Right.
And so, prior to 2000, to this last budget, because I know that it was amended to add a $3 million contingency, do we have an estimate of how much we've spent up to now? Have we spent that money, that, out of that contingency? How much money have, I guess, have we spent up to today from that contingency that you guys added, the $3 million?
We haven't, in this fiscal year, if you're asking, have we delved into the contingency fund in this fiscal year? For the liability program, we have not.
So why do we need $3 million? Like, where do you guys get that number from?
So, the $3 million is identified as amount, an amount required based on our self-insured retention.
Okay.
So we are self-insured for this particular line of coverage, and once we exhaust that self-insured retention, then we have reinsurance. Given the value of our experience in a given year, we may or may not exceed that $3 million. So we are essentially providing a failsafe that we have at least one time our self-insured retention.
Why $3 million now and we haven't had it in the past? I'm just trying to get a better understanding as to why do we allocate this amount now when we haven't done it before?
We actually have, and I'll, Jane will address it.
Right. Monies are never spent out of the contingency line item. If you look under the actuals, you will see zeros there because money is never spent out of contingency. Because in order to spend that contingency, they must come back to council in order to spend it. And what happens then is it's moved up into either refunds and claims or wherever it needs to be in order to pay that claim. So if, say, for some reason, they needed to spend some of the self-insurance retention, which is basically our $3 million deductible for each claim, then we would have to go back to council to get approval to move that money out of the contingency into a line item where the money could then be paid out in a claim.
So, can, assuming that, so say that we remove it out of contingency here, because we all have a reserve and a reserve for the city, right? Could we go and use our reserve if we ever have to, you know, if we go beyond the limits that we have here? Because you're telling me that we had set a contingency of $3 million, but we've never utilized it, or we haven't utilized it?
Yes, yes, we have used it, actually. I believe we used it in 2015.
When was the last time that we used it?
I believe last fiscal year, 2015.
Well, it doesn't show it here. You're telling me that the actuals are zero.
Right, and that's because, that's because money is never spent out of that line item. It's moved because we have to come back to council. When we have a claim and we need to move money out of that contingency, the Personnel Services Department comes back to this body and asks for permission to move that money from that line item to the refunds and claims line item so that the money can be paid. So if you will see under 2015 and 14, you will see under liability self-insurance, the 4.3 million and the 4.8 million, that was partially funded by the SIR. It is put in contingency so that it cannot be used by the department for anything else other than refunds and claims. It is protected, but it is there because it is our deductible for each individual claim.
Okay. Well, this, then, the way that the budget is written is very hard to read and to actually know that, and I think the public would have a hard time identifying the fact that we did or we didn't use the contingency as it's written here. We would have to look at other budgets and how the original proposal, so I don't know if there's a better way that you guys can actually put these numbers so that it does reflect the fact that that 4 million, that 4.8 million actually includes a contingency that we spent. As a, you know, as some, this is my second budget, and so I'm, you know, trying to get more familiar with it, but I can't, I can't see a person from the outside looking through to these numbers not having similar questions to what I am posing, just because if you read it on its face, you can't tell that we've utilized this contingency. And so I just want to make sure that what I'm voting on, I can justify to my constituents and say, this is the reason that I'm putting these monies aside because in the past, we have used it. This document doesn't reflect that to me on its face.
Counsel, if I could, we, and also, I believe that the insurance policy that we have that starts at $3 million requires us to appropriate $3 million to satisfy the first $3 million of any claim, and that money has to be sitting there, and so we would be out of compliance with our insurance policy if we didn't have it.
And thank you for that clarification, but I'm still saying that as it's written, if you look on page 98 and you look at the line item, it just doesn't, it doesn't, it's not clear to me, at least, in terms of how, how it's, if we are spending it. But I know that it's something that is needed, so thank you for, thank you for clarifying that on, so, on the liability insurance. Is there a similar requirement for the property? Self-insurance?
No, there is not. That is just as a prudent business measure to ensure that we have set aside a sufficient amount of contingency in, just in the event.
Okay. But, and we had, this is, is this the first time that we're doing this for the property?
We, this is the first time we've separated out the property and liability, so yes.
I am looking for my other question. If there's someone else, they can go and then I'll come back, sorry.
No problem at all. Next would be Councilmember Brand, who's punched up on our screen here. Councilmember Brand?
Yes, I want to follow up. I notice since I've been here, we've lost some big cases, and I know that the insurance policy does require, you know, it's been, I think it's actually went up since, I think when I started, it was about $2 million or 2.5 million? So it's actually went up, unfortunately, because of the claims we've had. So this is like having a policy for your car or for your home. If you start having a series of claims, your costs are gonna go up. And so what we do, we self-insure the first $3 million, and then, what's the ceiling? Is it 20 or 25 million on the liability ceiling?
Well, it's whatever the court decides.
No, but doesn't a policy dictate what the liability, the excess liability is?
The limits?
The, yes, up to 25 million, yes.
Okay, $25 million. If I recall, there was a couple of years we actually exceeded, the cune of cases within the fiscal year actually exceeded the deductible, so we had to try to find money from another source, the general fund, to bring that back up to its source. In fact, I think at one time, it was actually not even funded, one or two years, correct if I'm wrong. During the dark days of, you know, we were going from paycheck to paycheck, for a while there, that was not funded, and to me, that was a matter of, I guess, necessity, but when you have the money there, this prudent fiscal management, you'd have to fund that money there because that, you know, we're one lawsuit away from somebody coming up with a big judgment on the city of Fresno. And in the event that there's $3 million, and correct if I'm wrong, and let's say some miraculous happened, that people didn't sue the city of Fresno, we were successful and we didn't use the money, then the money can accrue, you're only gonna have at the most $3 million. That would mean, for example, if you had $2 million left at the end of the year, the following year, you'd only put in $1 million because you, whatever the statutory requirement, right?
Right.
So if nothing happens, then the following year, you're not allocating $3 million, correct? It's based on the actual experience that's going on.
The $3 million contingency, if it's not used, we don't add to it year after year, it remains at $3 million.
Right.
And the, the actual experience is gonna dictate what we are collecting each year.
Right, and again, year to year, this may go up over time, too, because unfortunately, lawsuits continue all the time. The other thing is the, the actual general fund emergency fund is specifically designated for emergencies. There's an act, there's language there that says it takes the mayor to declare emergency, takes a supermajority vote of the council to invoke it, but it's based on some sort of, you know, there's a natural disaster, you know, we, stock market crashed, we need the money. So there's a difference between, and I know there's other reserve pots out there, too, but, do I have that right?
Yes.
One other thing I'd like to clarify, too, is that this money is not just general fund. It's from the enterprises and the ISFs and, and, and the, and the general fund, so it's a combination.
Yeah, we get a claim from facts, that's an enterprise. We get a claim from the water department, it's gonna be that. So it's allocated out, correct? Okay, so, make sure I got it right. But again, if the money's not spent, that means next year, you're not adding more money. It doesn't build up beyond whatever the deductible is, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Soria?
Thank you.
Follow-up question or two?
Yes, I have just a follow-up. So on that point, thank you for mentioning the fact that these contingencies come from, or the monies come from different departments. Can you then give us a breakdown of that as well, please? And then, one other question that I had on page B93 regarding the insurance claims and refunds. So this last year, I think we allocated $1.3 million, and so now we're anticipating that, because we're allocating an additional half a million dollars. How did you guys come up with that calculation? Of an additional five, are you guys expecting more claims? Do we have something on the horizon that I don't know about, or, I'm just wondering?
I'm sorry, B93?
B93, insurance claims and refunds for the, because we started with $1.3 million and now...
Yeah, that number is, yeah, that number has, has been calculated based upon historical activity, and we consulted with the risk division in order to come up with that number based on the number of historical risk claims that we've had to pay for, for the property law, property claim.
So are there pending claims that we think that we're anticipating? I'm just wondering how you guys come up, came up with additional half a million dollars?
We would have to, to ask risk to go back and...
That would be great, if I could get that information, that would be great.
Sure.
And I guess going back to our original conversation with the 250, did we, did we just pay whatever claims would come up on the property by looking at where there was cost savings in our budget, or how did we come up with, with the funds to pay off these claims for the property, the property claims? Because we've separated the funds, right?
Correct, we've separated the funds.
And so we have allocated, how much did we allocate for property? We allocated, sorry. Can't find right now. So we've allocated a certain amount of, did we surpass the allocation last year, this last year? Or do we, I mean, do we anticipate surpassing it?
I think what we, correct me if I'm wrong with this, we looked at the actual experience with each line of coverage, property and liability, and identified which, what the experience was for each of those particular lines to develop a specific budget for each one rather than combined. And that was the basis behind that.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, we, we looked at historically what we have paid out, the subrogation that we've gotten back, and then determined an allocation or a budget for each individual type of coverage, both property and liability. So it was based on historical usage of, of the funds.
And, okay, that's, that's fine. And can I get a, I guess, a report up to date of how much we've spent on these claims and refunds for this last budget? I just want to make sure that as I'm looking and looking to approve this next year's budget, I am seeing really the true costs of the claims that are coming in. Thank you. That's it. Thank you so much.
Well, the screen is clear, and, so, thank you very much.
Could I, could I take the council's time to, first of all, say thank you to the management team that's with me today? TJ Miller, our Assistant Director, Jennifer Meisner, and Sandra Chavez Martin, our Human Resources Managers, Ken Phillips, our Labor Relations Manager, and Mike Payne, our Risk Manager. These folks, along with the cast of others that are in the office, help us accomplish the objective that is set forth by this body as well as administration. And it is with their assistance that we're able to fill all the vacancies, to address all the claims, and to serve nearly 3,500 people that are coworkers. And it's with great pride that we do that day in and day out, and look forward to continuing to do so.
Thank you very much, and thank you personally and your team of management, as well as the cast of others. As we know, it takes an entire division to achieve the goals with the size of our city, the size of our budget, and you guys do a great job, so thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
We'll move now to the Office of City Clerk.
Yeah, let's see if we can't get some of this information out this week. Good afternoon, Council President and Council. Let's see, during 15, excuse me, fiscal year 17, the City Clerk's office will continue to operate at the same level. at the same level as adopted. However, we do anticipate increases in permanent salaries due to the realignment of Unit 14 and the increase due to the additional pay period as well. However, the only request that we have is to replace the old computers that we have and purchase a laptop for our Assistant Clerk so he can be more efficient in these council meetings. And that's all I have to report for the new fiscal year. But I do want to just recap some of the things that we covered last year, '15 and '16. There was a lot of turnover in our office. We already have a small office. So we only have five people. So when you miss one, you miss them really bad. And so we lost our City Records Manager and ended up promoting our Administrative Clerk to the City Records Manager. So then, of course, we had to fill that position. And we have a new person in by the name of Pam Lozano, and she's doing really great. And so we're back on track with the full staff. And everybody's spending a lot of time cross-training and getting to know their new roles. I'd also like to announce that during that time, our Assistant Clerk Todd Stewart received his Certified Clerks, Municipal Clerks Certification. So he's at CMC. Congratulations to Todd. Also, last year, you guys gave us money for microfilming. And we were able to get through that project of backlog of microfilmed records that we need to preserve for historical value. The microfilming had not taken place since 2012. Also, we now have all of our Board and Commissions meetings in our legislative system. So they get the same kind of agendas that you all get, and they are pushed out automatically. And our department has also taken on the task this year of posting all meeting notices, all meeting agendas. And that's additional work with the little staff. So it is getting kind of tight, but we're taking care of it. We're also going to have that ADA language translated into Spanish and long on our agendas. And we'll be doing that just as soon as it gets approved by the City Attorney's Office, the language, we'll get that translated. Let's see. And recently, we worked with Laserfish, which was another program we talked about last budget season. IT set us up on that. We worked with the vendor to come up with our data that we're going to make public. And I think we just have one more small thing to do to get us to scan those records into that public repository. And so we're glad to report that as well. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. The screen is clear. Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Soria, sorry.
Thank you. I just had one quick question. Thank you, Yvonne, for the brief presentation. I just wanted to ask you whether you feel you have adequate personnel to perform the duties that require the office? How do you feel in terms of, I know that you guys have just finally fully staffed up.
Right.
But what is your perspective?
The perspective I have on that is that we keep above water with those really, really important things. But some of the things that may not be as visible, such as taking care of the records of the city, is not being done. And matter of fact, Caprielli, I'll talk with Laura about that. And I'm going to go ahead and get a proposal to you to propose that we implement a citywide records management program. I hear from some people that they don't even have a record staff in their department. And that scares me. As an attorney, you know that records can help you or they can hurt you. And if you have them and you shouldn't have them, it can hurt you. So I don't want to see that happen. And I want to put some controls in place and some training in place and get that going again.
And so you're thinking that there should be at least one person in the City Clerk's Office for record keeping?
Yes.
That's dedicated for that?
Yes, I think so. I think the person who's doing some of that now is the person who just got promoted. But there's some lower level things that can be done at an administrative clerk level that that person could concentrate on, and he could concentrate on other things, such as training departments, reviewing their inventories and things like that, and making sure they get rid of the records at the end of the term, the retention period. And so we don't keep records needlessly costing money in file cabinets and storage and things like that.
Perfect. And could you get us, I know that you said that you already, that you had spoken to Paul. So can you try to get us a proposal before, you know, in this, the next week or so, so that we have an opportunity to maybe further discuss this issue and see if we want to invest and start looking at seriously maintaining or doing records management throughout the city?
Yes.
Thank you. And I know that we just also launched the Youth Commission, which you guys are a part of, a part of it. Have you guys had to use much staff time? What do you anticipate?
I believe they're going to need some assistance from our department a few times a month.
Okay, so maybe we can talk about in a few months, you give us a report to see how that's impacting staffing level?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I did forget to take it out to the public, so pardon me. But if, at this time, if anyone would like to come forward, I see someone, a famous person coming forward right now. Your name and address? You're welcome.
George Hostetter, 7:30 West San Ramon, Fresno. And on behalf of reporters throughout Fresno, and just let me say, you've got a great City Clerk's Office.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public wish to come forward? Now's your opportunity. And seeing none, we'll bring it back up here to Member Kintaro.
Hi, Yvonne. I wanted to just say thank you for the good staff that you, great staff that you have. They're very accessible and really good at looking up, you know, some of the back minutes of some of the meetings. And I really appreciate that. And I noticed you didn't mention the Senior Secretary, but that's okay. No, she's done a great job too, and also very accessible. And she's usually the first person I call. And then, then it's helpful on giving me the direction of where, who I need to talk to and all that. So I just wanted to say, you've got a great staff. And I know you're doing the best with the, with the staff that you do have. I know they're probably multitasking quite a bit as well. So thank you very much. And you're doing a great job too. Thank you.
Okay, screen is clear. Again, thanks to you and the team. Appreciate it. And Todd, congratulations. Keep pursuing, my friend. Okay, we're finished with that department. We'll move on to the last department of the day, Information Services Department.
Information Services begins on page B69. This is an internal service fund, all except for the call center, which is funded by the General Fund. They have a total budget of $14.1 million and a total of 57 FTE. The changes for the Information Services are primarily in staffing. The total personnel costs are $5.9 million, or an increase of $765,000. The additions that are requested or proposed for FY17 are two GIS specialists who will help address requests for mapping, analysis, and implementation of the new land management system, one computer system specialist for support of connected mobile devices for both citywide and specifically for police and fire, and also one network system specialist for the increased support of the city's network and server infrastructure. That actually concludes my presentation. This is a very status quo budget. So if you have any questions, I believe that the Director is here to answer them.
Very good. Thank you. We'll take this out to our community. Is there anyone in the community that wishes to come forward? Now's your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. Councilperson Soria.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question from page B71. The transfer of the management of the city's copier contract to ISD? I'm just wondering why this contract was transferred?
Why the contract was transferred? Yes. Purchasing decided that it would be better for IT to administer the contract. Most of the activities for that contract, we were doing anyway. So when a copier came in, we took care of it. We set it up on the network. And we made sure that it worked properly. So they felt like it, we better serve for us in our department. So we gladly took that over from them.
How is this different from, I guess, we do a lot of the printing in-house? So I'm trying to figure out that structure in terms of the printing. Because I was under the impression that there is an attempt to try to...
Council, Councilmember, when we get to the Finance Department, we can discuss this in more detail. But essentially, our central printing department, we are proposing to take that out for a public bid and in order to identify the best resource for doing our central printing. And so moving this component of the contract to ISD, regardless of if we were going to do that or not, those are actually separate issues. But to answer your question, we are proposing to go out to bid for that service.
If I may, the copier lease, or for all the copiers that go throughout the city, central printing does, you know, just the printing for, you know, major print jobs. But for the copiers themselves, the support, they're at each department. And that's what we're administering. We're administering that piece of it. So I'm not the...
What was done before?
It was done the same. It was just in Finance. And we're moving it from Finance over to ISD.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you guys were still doing the work? It was just, how was that working in terms of the funds were allocated under Finance? I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, the funds were allocated in Finance. Finance administered the contract. They took care of the payments. They took care of the contract provisions. We took care of the support. We took care of the equipment. We took care of the placement and the issues that, for the copiers, if there were support issues and whatnot. So now instead, ISD is going to take care of everything, the finances, the contract administration. And the whole thing is now in ISD's department. So we're going to take care of the whole thing. And when the renewal comes up, we'll take care of the renewals. When the renewals were, came up before Finance took care of them. We worked hand in hand. I mean, the two departments worked together. But now, we're going to go ahead and assume that responsibility.
So was there staff that was handling that piece of it that is coming over to ISD? Or is just the work?
It's just the work and the finances, just the budget and the work. The staffing, yeah. There won't be an additional funding or staffing needed. Our staffing was taking care of the support. And the current staff who administer contracts now will just administer this contract. So it'll be fine.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to understand a little bit more of the structure and how the impact with staffing and so forth. But it seems like what you're saying is that we're just transferring over the allocation that would have otherwise been allocated under the Finance Department and moving it to ISD to continue to just service, do the same service?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
In a lot of ways, Councilmember, this is kind of harkens back to the dark ages when copiers were just kind of standalone machines. They weren't connected to the thing called a network. The network was something that people used to watch TV on. But because they are, it's an interface now, for us older folks, we remember when they just, you know, were standalone. But because they are connected vis a vis the network to our computers, to our printers, to the internet, because when you scan a document, you scan it out. It just makes sense, just like any other IT device, that they should be one administering that. So it's just bringing our operations up to the 21st century.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The screen is clear. So as I understand it, we're not proposing that we outsource. Not right now. I'm not coming to a different, different division, right? Just want to confirm. As Boaz John used to say, just want to make sure. Thank you very much.
If I may, also, we've had some new faces in ISD. We've had a little bit of turnover. We have some new managers. The current manager is Mike Doty, Regional Communications Manager. He's been here. Ken Ishimoto has been the current Administration Manager. We have a new GIS Division, a new GIS Manager in Bryce Hubbell. We've got Frank Votter, who is our new CSD Manager. And we also have Dennis Jones, who is our new SysApps Division Manager. I just want to let you guys know that staff does a very good job, works very hard. And just, you know, you don't see IT, and that's a good thing. Because if you don't see us, then we're doing our job. So I want to thank you very much for your support over the years.
Member Kintaro?
And how many years have Mike and Ken been here?
A number of years, longer than I have. And I'm here, what, 13? 36. 36 and 30. Mike's been here 36 and Ken's been here 30.
That's a lot of history.
Sure is.
Member Soria?
Just had a quick question. The other day, I was having a conversation with Yvonne about these monitors. So it seems like these monitors have been here since the beginning. Is there a plan to replace the monitors? Is it included in this budget?
It is not included in this budget, but there, we have talked about it. There's a dollar figure out there, and we're waiting to see how the budget works out to bring it to your attention.
What's the dollar figure?
It was around $200,000. But that takes care of the voting system, takes care of the monitors, takes care of the projector. It's a brand-new system for council. And it brings you from analog to digital. It also takes care of a lot of the wiring. So there are a lot of moving pieces to that, a lot of components. And that's why it's a big number.
Okay, so $200,000.
Yeah, we can probably do some pieces and piece parts and whatnot. So we can break that up and do it over years. But the, you know, some of it. But the bulk of it is, you have some old wiring underneath these systems, and they need to be taken care of. So...
Perfect. Then the last thing, so do you guys, are you guys the one that take care of the website?
No, that's under the PIO's office.
Okay. But you guys provide support on that, or...?
We provide support if it goes down, making sure it's up, making sure the servers are operating. We don't do anything with the content or the way it looks or how it's presented.
Bruce, when is that coming up as part of the budget? That issue, when can I talk about it?
That'll be under the Mayor/City Manager's budgets.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay, perfect. I'll bring it up then. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your older staff. I guess that's 30 years plus. And there too to the younger fellows and ladies of your department. I'm sure it'll be very beneficial to all of us. And we really, although we don't see you and don't hear from you and don't talk to you a lot, we sincerely appreciate all you do for us. Thank you so much, really do.
Thank you.
I think it was, I think it was Mike Doty that taught me how to use a pager. It's still...
Yeah, yeah. I think Mike came around after they invented the can and the string. But real quick, I wanted to also acknowledge, you know, it's interesting in this day and age because a lot of us get these things tied to our ankles or to our waist. And everyone has this perception that all you got to do is just download an app within two minutes, and, you know, all of a sudden, you're able to access all sorts of information. That's just the day and age that we live in. But it's far more complicated than just hitting the app and downloading it. I'll give you a good example. About 10 months, 11 months ago, somebody got this bright idea about this Fresco app. And that application was somewhat relatively easy initially to set up. But the inner working or the integration of this application with all the disparate systems is a good example of what happens when you get one new system, but you're still trying to tie it to a number of systems that are no longer supported, outdated. And the information that you get, while it's great information, it does expose a light to a lot of, another deferred asset, which is our software systems. But I've got to give a shout out to Sanjay and Brian. They can keep updating this with new, I don't want to call them codes, but issues for the constituents. But a lot of, some of the things that, like for example, in Public Works, the increase in, that we have for streetlight maintenance, came as a result of the work of downloading this app and the community's ability to let us know when problems are occurring out there. And the reports and the data sorting, and Brian knows this, and I've said this before, I'm a data hound. I'm a strong believer in analytics, business analytics. And they have been slicing and dicing data for me, including code, to the chagrin of some departments. But I want to thank them for their help, not only just supporting us with all the other software systems that we have, but for just simple things like integrating Fresco and allowing us, this team up here, to have access to the information that 18, well, eight or nine months ago, we didn't have, which is helping us improve the level of service we provide to our community. So thank you, Brian, and thank you for your team. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Bruce, did we already get that citywide information technology strategic plan?
I can answer that. We're currently in the process. We're expecting a draft report at the end of this month. So they went through, talked to the directors, talked to the entire city. They've got our project list. And the first draft should be, he said a couple of weeks, but I'm giving him to the end of the month.
So are we thinking about this... So are we thinking about this, about this plan to be included in the budget in terms of starting to figure out what are some of those things that we will be needing?
This is going to be...
Or we're going to have to come back?
Well, we'll have to come back because we're going to have this and we also just, and I haven't had a chance to read it, but the public safety communication upgrade. I haven't seen the price tag for that, so both of those will be forthcoming in a couple of months. They both will be FY '18 item that we're going to need to address.
Okay. And before you leave, Soria, I just came, I just saw one other question that I had in my book. I noticed that you guys are adding a computer system specialist that's costing $57,300 is budgeted. It's a new position to support the growth of connected mobile devices. How have we been doing this?
We've been using existing staff and it's put a strain on staff. We have one gentleman who's been doing it and he usually does desktop support and has been putting a strain on staff because we pulled him away to do that. So now we're putting somebody in place to actually take care of that function. And we've got a lot of tablets going in the field. It's tablets, it's mobiles, it's cell phones and everything. And so this person will be primarily for that reason and the person who, we're going to need more than one, of course, but the person who is doing it now will kind of be his backup half-time. So I think we'll be able to cover it that way.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Sure. No problem.
Okay. I think that concludes today's agenda, so we'll start tomorrow morning at 9:30 with airports, finance, public utilities, Mayor and City Manager, and last but not least, City Council Offices.
Council President, Public Utilities has been moved to next Tuesday.
Thank you for that correction. Very good. So with that in mind, we'll see you all tomorrow morning. Thank you very much for today and all the things you've done for us.